Good evening. I now call to order this session of the Public Hearing of the Land Use Planning Commission on Zoning Petition ZP 779A. Wolfden Mount Chase LLC's proposed rezoning to allow for the Pickett Mountain Mine. My name is Everett Worcester. I represent Piscataquis County on the commission. I'm the current Chairman of the Commission and I will be the hearing officer tonight. Perry?
Perry Ellsworth, Franklin County.
Gwen Hilton, Somerset County. Betsy Fitzgerald, Washington County.
Caleb Elwell, Assistant Attorney General and Counsel for the Commission.
Stacy Byer, Executive Director for the Commission.
Leo Trudell, Arista County.
Peter Bray, Red Hot Scourge County.
This hearing is being held pursuant to provisions of Title XII, Section 684, and Chapter 12 of the Commission's Rules, Mining and Level C Mineral Exploration Activities. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with Chapter 5 of the Commission's Rules for the Conduct of Public Hearings and the State's Administrative Procedures Act. The purpose of this session is to receive public testimony on the proposed rezoning of the Pickett Mountain Mine. This session is being recorded and livestreamed. First, the applicant will give a brief introduction to the proposal. Mr. Olet.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening, Chair Worcester, Commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Jeremy Willeth. I'm the Vice President of Project Development with Wolfden Resources. And I just want to give a brief introduction on our proposed Pickett project. Oh, that's good. So, the Pickett project is a proposed, small, underground, state-of-the-art mineral deposit project. It's located about nine miles north of Paton Main. I think the pointer works on the screen, Paton there. North along Route 11. And then, this is a little bit of a zoomed-in image. So as I was mentioning, north along Route 11. And then there's a 4.4-mile access road. It's a pre-existing logging road from Route 11 out to the site. The green box, the rectangle box there, that's Wolfden's property ownership, around 7,100 acres. And then there's a little yellow shape in the middle of that box is the area that we're proposing to rezone, which is around 374 acres. So this is the proposal for the mine site layout. For reference, that yellow shape is now this black outline on the outer edge. There's a 400-foot buffer boundary between the outer edge and the outer extents of any proposed infrastructure. You notice that the infrastructure is proposed in kind of three areas. One is the Phase 1. To the bottom left there is the Phase 2. And then up north is the green, which is proposed solar field. Altogether, those three phases equal out to about 129 acres of the 374. So to go through this area, Phase 1 is inclusive of our underground access, which is rather small. It's called a portal, as you can see here. A portal is an opening to underground. In our case, it's going to be around 64 feet wide by about 100 feet long. And that is sort of like the initiation of the underground tunnels. In addition to that, Phase 1 also houses a series of pads for ore rock storage, waste rock storage, and then low-grade ore storage. Also has a snow, uh, snow storage for, you know, any collected contaminated snow. And then, most importantly, it has a robust water management area, which is inclusive of a water collection pond rated for a 1 in 500-year storm event, 24-hour storm event, ultrafiltration and reverse osmosis water treatment facility to bring water quality to a Class A standard, and then a post-water treatment storage pond, which, from the water treatment plant, cleaned water gets deposited into a pond where it's then measured and ensured that quality is achieved. To discharge that cleaned water, that's again as Class A standard, we propose a series of spray irrigation and snowmaking machines and areas. And by doing that, we're proposing that we get the treated water back into the surrounding environment via its natural, basically mimicking precipitation. So moving to Phase 2, so this phase will only take place in sort of year 3, year 2 or year 3 of the operation. And what that is, it includes a shaft, which is a vertical opening, a smaller one, six feet by 16 feet roughly. And that's vertical and used as a rock conveyance from the deeper parts of the mine, which I'll get into. In addition to that, there's also a couple of rock pads on there as well. Again, all of the, the, the rock pads are all lined, double-lined, to ensure all, you know, potentially contaminated water is collected. And not much to say about the solar field. It's roughly just under 50 acres of the total 129 acre foot cleared area. So this is what mining would look like here. On the bottom left is an image of what that portal might look like. For scale, that white vehicle right there is about the size of a half-ton truck. To the right is a schematic of what that mining operation might look like. So again, the portal would stop on, or start on surface, you know, and take advantage of the surface topography, and then enter into a series of tunnels that are developed 16-foot by 16-foot in cross-section. And they switch back, or helix, down to a specific elevations. Once those desired elevations are achieved, then a horizontal drift is driven, the same profile into the deposit itself depicted by ore body here. The ore body starts, you know, the ore body comes to surface, but our mining operation is really only going to start about 100 feet vertically. And so, once the, um, once the horizontal developments are driven into the deposit, then a drill is used to perforate the deposit. The rocks are then fragmented with explosives. And then a front-end, a low-profile front-end loader comes in and picks up the rocks that have been fragmented, loads into a truck, and then the truck hauls it up to surface. The rocks that are excavated from this area, in the development, those are preferentially developed in inert rock, essentially aggregate. Those rocks are temporarily, temporarily sored on surface on a lined, double-lined pad. And then as small components of the ore body are removed, then those rocks that came from the initial tunnels are then brought back underground, which is called backfill. So at no point is there a large excavation on scale. It is about 4 million tons, and we're looking at roughly 4,000 tons at a time. So, one of the things to point out, we're focused on zinc, zinc primarily, copper, lead, a little bit of silver, a little bit of gold. And really, all this slide points to is that these minerals are used by everybody every day in significant volumes. Zinc and copper of which are both on the critical minerals list in the US. So, you know, pending we are able to, you know, protect the natural resources all around the project, ensure that water is managed very well, why would people be interested in the project? Well, the benefits, I won't get into a lot of detail, but essentially we're looking at, you know, 270 jobs all in, 233 associated to the mine only, particularly high wages as an industry standard, and significant training programs to fulfill those roles. And from economics, sort of, you know, regional economics perspective, over the duration of the mine life, which is, you know, 10 to 15 years operating mine life, we're looking at around the $700 million economic output. So, what are the employment, what, I guess, what are the employment needs? Basically, the skillsets exist in Maine. We're looking for operators, mechanics, welders, you know, a whole slew of skills that exist here currently. I mentioned a training course earlier. That training course is really training the skillsets that exist here already in the environment that they would be working in, i.e., underground tunnels. This table kind of depicts a list of the types of positions, and this is really the focus of the underground here. So equipment operators, mechanics, laborers, and then, you know, miners. Oh, there we go. So in terms of schedule, we're obviously in a rezoning hearing. And pending, you know, a favorable decision post-hearing, we're looking at two to three years of baseline, oh, two to three years of baseline study work that is first also approved by, well, DEP at that stage with public input. That, those baseline studies would happen concurrently with mine feasibility and detailed design and updates. After that, we'll go through another public hearing process, but under the DEP in association to their Chapter 200 rules. And then pending a decision there, then we have a two-year construction phase followed by a 10-year, 10 to 15-year mine operating life with two to three years of reclamation at the end of that, monitoring into perpetuity. That is my introduction to Pickett.
Thank you. If you want to speak this evening and have not yet signed up to do so, please see one of the LUPC staff. At the moment, we have roughly 55 people who have signed up to speak, which means each speaker is going to have three minutes. Three minutes is not a lot of time. We recognize that. Let me give you a thumbnail of three minutes. If you have two double-spaced typed pages, you're probably not going to get through the second page before the three minutes is up. If you have single-spaced one page and a half, the game is over. You know? What I would suggest you think about doing is picking out the three or four key things that you want us to be aware of in your presentation. And you'd have about 40 seconds per item to highlight your concern. And if you have typed, a typed presentation, Tim Carr will take your typed presentation and we will put the whole thing up on our website. So if you have prepared two or three pages of testimony, it will show up on the website. We just won't listen to it all here tonight. Okay? At this time, I will ask all persons planning to testify this evening to stand and raise your right hand. your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated. The LU PC staff is going to be calling up speakers. And what we're, what the plan is, to call up the first three speakers, and then, as a speaker leaves, we're going to call up another speaker. So we will have three people sitting up front all the time, ready to come to the podium. And we're calling names as they were signed, so. When your name is called, you should come to the microphone, which is there. Please clearly identify yourself by name and place of residence, and whether you represent an individual firm, a legal entity, before beginning your testimony. Speak clearly, so that an accurate account of this proceeding may be recorded, and to ensure your comments can be considered. We do have a court reporter here tonight taking down all the testimony, plus it's being recorded electronically. So please don't speak too quickly, because you'll snow the, the, the gal that's doing the typing. Just a little housekeeping. If you don't know where the restrooms are, you go out the door, take a right, go a half-mile, take the next right, and go a half-mile. And that's why the water fountain is as well. Audi, you want to call the names, please?
Okay, first up, we have Glenn Adams, and if Tim McCloskey and Landis Hudson would
Also, we have people with signs that warn you, you've got two minutes left, one minute left, thirty seconds left, you're out, okay?
I have about half a page typed written, so I think we'll get through it. My name's Glenn Adams. I'm a resident of Oakland, Maine. I'm here representing myself tonight. Members of the Maine LU PC, good evening, LU PC Chair Worcester and LU PC Commissioners. My name's Glenn Adams, and I'm a resident of Oakland, Maine. I'm testifying today in support of Wolfton's rezoning application related to the Pickett Mountain Mine Project. As a Maine-born resident exceeding forty years in age, I truly appreciate all the state has to offer. That includes time spent outdoors with my wife and four children. During Labor Day weekend in 2022, we enjoyed our time staying at the Madagam and Wilderness Campground on the banks of the East Branch of the Penobscot River, and exploring upper and lower South Branch ponds in Baxter State Park. As a licensed professional engineer educated at the University of Maine, I've been fortunate enough to be able to work in Maine for much of my career. Over the last two decades, I've seen many types of projects, both public and private, environmentally sensitive, and with high visibility be constructed, and seen others die in the permitting and approval process. I've also worked in every corner of the state, from Prescott Isle to Danforth to Roxbury and Kittery, in places with significant opportunity for our residents, and others with little to offer. I'm asking for you to approve Wolfton's application and let them move on to the next steps in this process. Let Wolfton prove themselves in the study and permitting phase, and watch them create local jobs and opportunity for the residents of this great state. I thank you for your time and for the opportunity to testify, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Tim McCloskey, followed by Landis Hudson, and if Eliza Townsend will come up front, please.
Hello, my name's Tim McCloskey. I, uh, I'm here in support of the Wolfton Project in the Mount Chase area. Just a brief thing, I grew up in Rooster County, and I hauled logs up and down Route 11 in the seventies, lumber up and through Route 11. And as I washed all the sawmills up and down those corridors closed, and the paper mills closed, and I moved down to Bangor, and I've, and again, I've worked in every sawmill, every paper mill in the state, and I saw this opportunity. I've been reading about it in the paper. I have friends that live in the area. I've hunted deer around Mount Chase. We go fishing around Mount Chase. Got friends that own camps in Shin Pond, and they're all in favor of this project, and it's, I think it would be a shame if we didn't give them an opportunity to prove themselves. Said God gave us these minerals in the ground, and we should take advantage of it when we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Landis Hudson, followed by Eliza Townsend, and if Chad Perkins would come up front, please.
I am Landis Hudson. I'm a resident of Yarmouth, Maine, and I'm speaking here on behalf of the nonprofit Maine Rivers. We appreciate this opportunity to speak regarding the application for rezoning submitted by Wolfton Resources, and we do not support the request and recommend that the LU PC deny the rezoning request. The proposed mine would be located in an area of high-quality waters, largely Class A. These waters would not be allowed to accept waters from the mining operation without significant amounts of treatment. Having listened to hours of testimony and discussion in Melanocque, we are left with more questions than answers. We do not know, we do know by their very nature that mining operations have negative impacts on water quality. Where and exactly how the processing of mineral materials will take place? How much water will be used, and where, and when, and exactly how will that occur? How will materials be transported? We do not know enough about the costs and realities associated with Wolfton's plan to go forward. I do not believe that the LU PC can determine that Wolfton's activities will have no undue adverse impact on existing uses. It was clear to me that Wolfton Resources sees their job as cracking the door open enough to allow some other entity in to actually run these mining operations. We heard a lot about Equinox Partners out of Stanford, Connecticut, their interest, their balance sheets, and their investors. I would like us to consider Maine and our future as the more important stakeholder. The area under consideration is designated as an outstanding river segment under Maine's Natural Resources Protection Act, N R P A. Located close to the proposed industrial site are state heritage fish waters, designated as such for their intact habitat, valuable ecology, and ability to provide value to brook trout. Maine is the last true stronghold for stream-dwelling populations of wild brook trout. We believe that this proposal opens the doors to unnecessary risks in the headwaters of the Penobscot River. The waters of the Penobscot are now hopefully beginning to recover from generations of industrial abuse, including PCBs, mercury contamination, PFAS, and landfill leachate. We are concerned that the proposed mining plans rely too heavily on unknowns to successfully carry out the proposed operations, and the risks to conservation are too great in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Eliza Townsend, followed by Chad Perkins, and if Dwayne Toma could come forward, please.
Good evening. I am Eliza Townsend. I am a resident of Leeds, and I am here tonight as Main Director of Conservation Policy for the Appalachian Mountain Club. We own a hundred and fourteen thousand acres of forest land in Pescataquas County, where we operate three backcountry lodges, maintain a hundred and thirty miles of trails open to the public, and provide outdoor education for every student in Pescataquas County. For twelve years now, we have worked to restore the Atlantic salmon, along with partners, and restored a hundred and twenty-six miles of rivers and streams, so that today, the Atlantic salmon is able to reach its historic headwaters at Gulf Hegas for the first time in more than a hundred and eighty years. We're deeply invested in our communities and in Maine's natural resources, because we know that Maine's clean environment is our most valuable asset. The parcel proposed for rezoning drains to bodies of water that hold special status, and ultimately, the Penobscot River. The importance of the Penobscot River watershed to Maine's ecosystems and economy is hard to overstate. Now, the critical issue in this application is, of course, acid mine drainage, and the applicant does not dispute that. But they are using an age-old strategy in trying to focus, to say, this is just the rezoning step, we'll worry about the environmental impact in front of the Department of Environmental Protection. Please, don't fall for it. LUPC's Rule, Chapter Ten, states that to approve the proposed application, the LU PC must find that the proposed development is reasonably self-contained and self-sufficient, well-planned, and not detrimental to other values in its comprehensive plan, including diverse, abundant, and unique high-natural, high-value natural resources and features and natural character. The burden of proof is upon the applicant to show by substantial evidence that the proposal satisfies that criteria, and Wolfton has not met that burden of proof. Further, state law requires that in reviewing the petition for zone change for the purpose of metallic mineral mining, the commission must consider impacts upon the areas within and adjacent to the commission's jurisdiction, including ecological and natural values, and public health, safety, and general welfare. And yet, we do not know where the placement of processing and tailings will take place. So without that information, the commission simply does not have a complete application from which to make a decision. Further, the LU PC must not approve rezoning unless it determines that the applicant is both committed and economically capable of ensuring that there will be no impact on Class A surface waters. And yet, the applicant has not met that requirement. Third-party reviewer SWCA Environmental Consultants writes, "The environmental and other permitting requirements for water have not been considered in this assessment of financial practicality of the project." That's an alarming statement. The application before you--
Ma'am, you need to finish.
Yep. The application before you is not a complete application, and the LU PC must ensure that the proposal is not detrimental to local residents and property owners, ecological and natural values, recreation, and public health. Without a full application before you, you do not have the means to make that decision. I've submitted my final--
Thank you.
--comments. Thank you.
Up next, we have Chad Perkins, followed by Dwayne Toma, and if Malley Obas-Sawan, Saw, Sawin, sorry, will come forward, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chad Perkins. I serve in the Maine House Representative, representing District Thirty-One. Though I represent District Thirty-One, I am somewhat familiar with the communities that would be directly affected by the project, as I am involved with a large nonprofit that serves these communities directly. While Maine at one time boasted robust timber, farming, mining, and even manufacturing industries, well, few industries we have left in Maine struggle to survive. Starting with the loss of a significant portion of the labor force resulting from the fact that Maine lost more men per capita than any other union, state, and civil war, years of economic immigration, and poor economic, energy, and tax policies followed, that has left our state economy devastated. Maine has the third-highest tax burden in the nation, and consistently rates among the worst in the nation in overall energy costs. While some continuously endeavor to put all of the eggs of our economic hope in the singular basket of tourism, our businesses suffer. The tax burden on individual citizens increases, and our largest export remains our young people. Industrial business ventures that seek a home in our state should be welcome, as they could offer much-needed employment opportunities for Maine citizens, shoulder large portions of municipal tax burdens, and contribute to a healthy and diversified economy. Additionally, Maine has what may be considered the strictest, most stringent, and ecologically-friendly mining laws of any state in the nation. Any mining project, including the Pickett Mountain, Pickett Mountain Project, would have to meet the regulations and statutory requirements that were developed in cooperation with and improved by the Natural Resources Council of Maine and Trout Unlimited, and passed into law in 2017 by the Maine Legislature. It is imperative that we continue to grow our economy, so that we do not crush the backs of individual taxpayers in the face of ever-growing state budgets, and it is equally important that we provide stable, well-paying, and dependable, ongoing jobs for Maine residents. I firmly believe that we can do that even by allowing a mining company to develop new resource extraction opportunities, operating under the established, extremely rigid, and environmentally-friendly laws of our state. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is Dwayne Toma, followed by Malley Obas-Sawan, and if Arlie Kraus could come up forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Toma from the Passamaquoddy Tribe. First and foremost, it's an honor for me to be here with you this evening to be able to share some historical components regarding this type of measure that's being put forward here. Let me put it into context for you. We have inhabited this region for over twelve thousand years, according to archaeologists. We have a deep connection to our mother. And when I say "our" mother, I'm talking about your mother as well. She's hurting. She's in danger. In serious danger. Our people have been saying this for thousands of years, and how we treat our mother. We have economic ventures that people are trying to take us on, and we don't want to be a part of that venture. This is all economically based and driven by economies and money. Start taking a look at how we treat our mother. When you start affecting the water, you start affecting each other. What you do to the waters, you do to every one of these people here. What you do to the fish, you do to everybody here. What you do to the salmon, you do to everything. We're all affected, because we're all connected. Let's not allow this to disconnect us to our mother and to our long-term effects. In our territory, we look in seven generations. Think about seven generations and the impacts of mining on our mother, taking from our Think about that long term and how that's going to affect us. Don't let economy drive this. Our mother is sacred. Let's look at her in those, in that context. She is sacred. She will provide for us. We got to look out for her, because she will look out for us. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening, and hopefully that we can ma'lo kadina in our language, ma'lo kadina, the first language of this land. Ma'lo kadina is, let's work together. K'chewa lewin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Malley Obas-Sawan, followed by Arlie Kraus, and then if Kate Follinsby can come forward, please.
Hello, my name is Malley--
Give me a second. We have a longstanding policy not to allow signs at the public hearings, so please don't show your signs. Thank you.
My name is Malley Obamsoin, and I'm an Abenaki environmentalist from Old Town, working in land and water justice across the state. I also run a conservation land trust. I have a deep relationship with the watersheds of Maine, the Katahdin region, and I have been fighting against the pollution of Maine's waterways for years. As indigenous people, we are keenly familiar with the process of being misled and lied to by corporations. We are not falling for Wolfton's glad-handing and empty promises about labor opportunities in Maine's economy. We can see that any economic benefit of mining in Patton would be short-lived and far outweighed by the environmental consequences that would reverberate throughout the state. Metallic mining poses profound environmental risks to water systems. This rezoning proposal affects the headwater tributaries of the Penobscot, mind you, the largest watershed in Maine, and the Madawamka Rivers, both of which are designated for sustenance fishing use for Wabanaki nations. sustenance fishing use for Wabanaki nations. The Penobscot River is also home to one of the most celebrated restoration projects in the entire nation, and Wolfden's mining threatens to undo decades of those efforts to restore the health of the river and its sea-run fish. If the LUPC approves this mining project, you will be liable for reversing one of the highest-studied cases of river restoration in the world. On your website, it states that your commission was created to, and I quote, "preserve public health, safety, and general welfare, support and encourage Maine's natural resource-based economy and strong environmental protections, prevent commercial and industrial uses detrimental to the long-term health, use, and value of these areas, and to Maine's natural resource-based economy, prevent the despoilation, pollution, and detrimental uses of the water in these areas, and conserve ecological and natural values." Please uphold the principles your commission was founded under, and do not allow this land to be rezoned for mining operations. Please don't let this application go on to pass before the DEP. Any decision that we make now will live on far beyond today, and we must remember that we answer to our children and our grandchildren for environmental choices we make. Owinne.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Arlie Kraus, followed by Kate Follensby, and if Angie Reed would come up front, please.
Good evening. My name is Arlie Kraus. I am from Warren. I have been consumed with the question of opening Maine to metallic mining. I've decided the best thing I can do is to speak from my heart today. I live in Warren, and my town, along with Union and Hope, are going through a very similar dilemma as the Picket Mountain community. A junior Canadian exploratory mining company named Exyro has been trying to get a foothold in our town since 2023, to explore for nickel primarily, the proposed mine being similar in construction to the proposed Wolfden site. Our communities are faced with the same issues of sulfitic rocks and subsequent formation of acid mine runoff entering the watershed which the mine would be in. We are being promised jobs for our locals, improvements to roads, money in our communities. We are being promised that there will be no pollution, the tailings will be dry stacked and safe, and that the ore will be processed, onsite or off. They cannot, will not specify which. We have been told conflicting stories that the mining company will only explore and hand off the site to a larger company, or that Exyro will mine it themselves even though they have no experience with actual mining processes. Does this sound familiar? We have been told that they have state-of-the-art technology, which guarantees acid mine leachings will not occur and poison the St. George River watershed. Technology unproven. Their argument's just an attempt for fancy jargon to suck our community members in, who are desperate for jobs and money for their families. They have given no real answers to our specific concerns. I was asked by the community if I would consider selling the rights to minerals under my family farm. Did I pause? I did. Honestly, I did. I'm a single mother with three children in an economy getting worse and worse. I'm self-employed with enormous bills looming and student loans for my degree in biochemistry. I'm not sure I'll ever be able to pay off. My answer, however, was no. There are no safe ways to mine for metallic minerals, especially in such a wet environment as the state of Maine. Ask any farmer across the state, and they will tell you, this has been the wettest season in decades. I want a future for my children and a future for the children of Maine. For this to happen, we need clean water. We need farmland that is not contaminated by heavy metals or acidic runoff. The towns of Warren, Union, and Hope banded together, and a group of citizens from the towns formed Karma, Citizens Against Residential Mining Activities, of which I am a board member. We have educated ourselves. We have called on experts in tailings, hydrogeology, metallic mining to learn all sides of what mining in the state of Maine means, and we have said, "No." I will be submitting my written testimony. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Kate Follensby, followed by Angie Reed, and if Scarlett LeBe Watson would come up front, please.
Hello. My name is Kate Follensby. I'm a resident of Orano, and I represent myself. I ask you tonight to deny Wolfden's request for rezoning. If I were hiring someone and they submitted an application covered in errors, I would not hire them. If I were hiring someone and they had absolutely no experience doing a highly sensitive job, I would not hire them. If I were hiring someone and they made disparaging comments about Indigenous peoples, I would not hire them. If I were hiring someone-
(applause)
If I were hiring someone and they withheld critical information about how they would do a job safely, I would not hire them. Why do we have lower standards for our natural resources and our home? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Angie Reed, followed by Scarlett LeBe Watson, and if Laura Keppner can come up front, please.
My name is Angie Reed. I'm a resident of Linius, Maine. I'm representing myself. I got my undergraduate degree in Water Resources Management at University of New Hampshire, and my master's degree in stream ecology from Colorado State University. After that, I moved to Maine, back to the Northeast. I'm originally from New Hampshire. I had the honor of working for the Holton Band of Malacite Indians as their water resources specialist. From there, I actually worked for many, for and with, many sovereign Native nations across the country with a river conservation organization. And then I came back to work for Penobscot Indian Nation, and I've been doing so almost 20 years. I've lived in Arista County for 25 years. Not local, but I know what it's like to live up in an area where there's not a lot of jobs, especially for somebody with my training. So, but I love where I live. I actually heard an organic farmer up there say once that if he could, if it was possible to find a soulmate in a plot of land, he'd found it. And I thought, yep, that's exactly how I feel about living on my little 40-acre lot in Linius, Maine. So I love my work, and I love where I live. I actually paddle a lot on the Madawamke River, the West Branch particularly, on which this will be, if it is passed and done. But, so I decided to stay where I live, didn't move, and I commuted for 16 years, four days a week, down to Penobscot Nation. It's been an honor to do the work that I do. Unfortunately, I've seen a lot of this kind of impact throughout the country. Mining, we used to think that applying sludge to farmlands in this state was okay, and now we're learning it's not. It's a pattern over and over again, that we think things are fine, but they're actually not until they are not. And I did the stats before I came here. I thought, okay, well, what is 273 jobs? The population of Arista County is 66-something thousand. 273 jobs is like less than 1% of the entire population. So I'm here to say I don't actually think that it's worth the risk. I understand that we need jobs, not sure they provide enough, and I don't actually think that this area of Arista County should be the guinea pig for people who say they can do things that have not been proven to this day. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Up next is Scarlett LeBe Watson, followed by Laura Keppner, and if Katina Westcott could come forward, please.
My name is Scarlett LeBe Watson. I am a Rockland resident, and I am 17 years old. I want to grow up in a clean and healthy environment. I want to be able to grow and learn with a community of supportive people who have my best interest at heart. I want to be able to continue to paddle and sail and hike and climb, the way I've been doing since I was born. And I don't think that this mining operation will provide that. I don't think that it will support a clean and healthy environment for my future and my generation's future, and I don't think that it will provide lasting economic benefits. As we heard in the proposal, this mine is only proposed to last 10 to 15 years, and it would take two years to make and two years to clean up. That's a lot of financial burden to incur on the local community. They are creating a large mine, and that takes a lot of resources, and then that mine will only be in operation for approximately 10 years. And that's not enough time to make it worth it. Even if it were looking, even if we were looking at it from a solely economic perspective, it would not make economic sense. It doesn't make sense from an environmental standpoint. It doesn't make sense from an economic standpoint, and I don't think it makes sense from a humanitarian standpoint, because mining is not good for people's health. We know this. It does not benefit them to work in underground conditions with particles in the air, and it does not benefit them to drink contaminated water. We're having a PFAS crisis already, and I don't want to add more contaminants to the list of pollutants we're already worried about consuming. And so I wish that you would not allow this to pass, not pass the rezoning laws, because it's not good for my future, it's not good for my generation's future, and it's not good for the future of the people in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Laura Keppner, followed by Katina Westcott, and if Bruce Taylor can come up front, please.
I'm Laura. I'm 15 years old and live in Waldo, Maine. I'm representing myself tonight. I am here opposing the mine because of my connection to nature and my passion to work against climate change and anything that will cause environmental harm to the water, soil, and air. I came to care about the environment from growing up in the beautiful lands of what is now called Maine. I am a birder, and it is impossible for me to appreciate the birds without appreciating the increasing number of challenges they face with the degradation of habitat. And I do not think we need to add yet another obstacle in the form of this mine. Please protect the water, soil, air, plants, and birds for my generation, future generations, and the well-being of the earth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Katia Westcott, followed by Bruce Taylor, and if Diane Ultezuski would come up forward, please.
Is it, okay. Hi. My name is Katia Westcott. I'm actually pursuing my master's for environmental policy and management, so this is actually something I've been having a lot of interest with. I'm in opposition of the zinc metal mining proposed by Wolfden, and that rezoning should not move forward in the next phase of permitting. In my understanding, based on research, the uncertainty of concerns pollutants entering the groundwater, impact on natural resources is far reached based on Maine rulings, Chapter 200. The claims for remedial actions reflect inconclusive and display inconsistency based on their claims disclosed for preventative measures. The unfamiliar practice of mining nearby waterways and appointed exposures is clear that this will, in fact, will cause environmental adverse effects in the surrounding areas. This violates the precautionary principle and defines a legal approach to innovations with potential for causing harm when extensive scientific knowledge on the matter is lacking. It has mentioned that treating the wastewater effluent discharge by implementing reverse osmosis water treatment is a very expensive procedure. And preserving of water quality, it takes billions of waters in the ore extraction method, and the capacity it will uphold will be an expensive process in turn. The incentive of Maine's stringent water standard is very rigorous, and I believe Wolfden does not understand the cleanliness that is required in the state of Maine. And with no experience to this degree of management practices, the chemical of concern other than acid mine drainage is PFAS. The stormwater discharges from metal mining or ore mining of interest, the industrial activities such as geological location, topography, hydrology, and the extent of impervious surfaces, the extent of extraction is undermined. The mining application and extraction of ores and minerals involve acid suppressants and wetting agents, hydrocarbon-forming agent, fluorinated suffolges in the ore floating and involving as pipes, cables, and hoses, and conveyor belts. The PFAS is definitely overlooked in lieu of the process of extracting the ores from these mines. So, in other words, I would like you guys to just not allow Wolfden and do their exploration here in the state of Maine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Bruce Taylor, followed by Diane Ultezuski, and then if Rudy Rockliff would come forward, please.
Hi. I'm Bruce Taylor from the town of Sweden. I'm also the guy who can't turn off his cellphone. I'm sorry. As a physician who's been involved in metals in many ways, both in civilian and military medicine, I'm very concerned about the toxic health effect of metals. I'm very concerned about this problem, which is ignored in the application before you. As you know, in the land use plan that for, there should not be any overriding conflict with public values which require protection. I think this fails, and also I think the submission fails because the PD, DP sub-districts require that there be no negative impacts on public health. If you look at Standex's application, they really don't talk about monitoring and assessment and reaction to discharges in air or water after they occur, which will occur. And very concerningly, if you look at the section on health conditions and risk factors, page 331, it's grossly inadequate, although they do address things such as obesity, smoking, colon cancer, and adults is very important. They entirely ignored factors related to metal and particulate exposure. No data was analyzed or collected for premature deliveries, small or low-for-birth weight births, respiratory distress such as asthma, which is important when you're dealing with particulate matter which is generated from mining operations, and a very critical problem when you're dealing with toxic metals is neurodevelopmental. Also, they did not at all cover facilities, and I think this is important and shows their ignorance, no facilities or data was provided on special education in the area or facilities for autism. As we know, that the child, that developing fetus in risk is at great risk from particulate matter. In fact, the University of Arizona Institute for Environmental Engineering found that particulate matter from metal that, from mining includes metal that goes a long distance. It gets into the water and into the biod, and then to the bodies. There's no safe level for lead, and it has been found that children do poorer in school the closer they are, a neurodevelopmental test, rather, the closer they are to mining. And if you look at the Callahan Corporation Mine in Brooksville, the waters of Goose Bay, after more than 50 years of closure, you are, you can still not, you can still not harvest shellfish. And we're still paying through that, the taxpayers of Maine, through our Department of Environmental Protection Funds. I'm all for, as a physician and being in the military, I've used metals in many different ways. It's important for our economic security and national, and our national security, but I think this application fails in many ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Diane Ultezuski, followed by Rudy Rockliff, and then Estefen Martinez.
Good evening. My name's Diane Ultezuski. I live in Belfast, and I'm speaking for myself. Like so much of Maine, Picket Mountain is a natural treasure with clean water and abundant fish species, so necessary to the Wabanaki people and to all Mainers. Class A waters are what we want in our state, and we all need to work to preserve them because they are so irreplaceable. I recently spent a week in Bern, Switzerland, where I was amazed and delighted by the Arrow River, which flows right through the city, a pure azure color, clear to the bottom, full of people swimming and kayaking right in the middle of the city. It is astounding to me that we might not want to preserve the very same natural beauty and pristine condition they enjoy over there, right here in Maine. We know what to expect if this commission rezones to greenlight Wolf- We know what to expect if this commission rezones to greenlight Wolfden's extraction. People and animals will be sickened, their lives drastically shortened, their progeny genetically affected. Unlined tailing ponds will kill birds and seep into groundwater. Way down the road, someone will blow the whistle and a cleanup will commence, as if that were even fully possible. You know, as well as I do, any cleanup will land squarely on the shoulders of Maine taxpayers and will only contribute to the despair young people feel about our environment. As many testimonies have already established, Wolfden has no track record of living up to its promises. I think the promise of monitoring in perpetuity rings very hollowly on many ears here, particularly indigenous ears. We don't want them here. We do not want mining in Maine because of the inevitable risk of destructive effects. Please do not rezone the area, and please do not allow this company to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Rudy Rockliff, followed by Estefan Martinez, and if Dana Colahan can come up front, please.
Hi, I'm Rudy Rockliff. My wife told me that three minutes, I can't even introduce myself in three minutes, so this is gonna be tough. I was born in Hamden, I live in Winterport. For the last 27 years, I've owned a geological consulting business, NGS Incorporated, here in Bangor with my business partner, Mike Scully, who's here also. And I'm here to urge the commission to approve Wolfden's rezoning request. Let me explain. First of all, a few days ago, my partner, Michael, sent me a thing from the Audubon Society, he's a member, and they were urging him to come here to speak out against the, their request. And I said, "Michael, what, do they know you're a geologist? And do they know that you actually did your master's degree on that deposit?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Well, I don't think they're gonna wanna hear what you have to say." And he said, "Yes, that's probably true, so you say it." So that's why I'm here. When I graduated from the University of Maine back in 1977, the first job I got was working in northern Maine as an exploration geologist. At that time, there had been a discovery up west of Ashland, the Bald Mountain Deposit, and it initiated a huge sort of exploration effort in northern Maine. And I got onto that and got a very good job with a company here in Bangor, L.A. Wing and Associates, and worked up there. One of the first places we explored was the T6 R6, now called the Picket Mountain Deposit. And let me explain how we found that. We, it's pretty simple, really, we go out and we take soil samples. We walk through the woods with a compass and pace and take a soil sample and then send that to be analyzed. And it, they analyzed it for copper, lead, and zinc, which were the metals we were searching for, along with gold and silver. And typically, the lab would come back and the reports would be about, you know, five, 10 parts per million. Well, the sample number 201, which I like to say that I took, that came back extraordinarily high. It was like in the 15,000 parts per million, and that led to the discovery of that deposit. 30 seconds left? Oh, no. Oh geez, sorry. What I'm gonna say to you is that I had, for the next 10 years, a good job in northern Maine, paid well, pretty soon, and we lived in Patton. We helped us, yeah, see, I can't do it, can I?
Please, wrap it up.
Can I finish that sentence, though? I just wanna say that we, we had a million dollar budget, a lot of that went to the local economy, Bud Bell's IGA, we rented houses, we hired Scott Skinner.
We had time as a.
Up next is Estefan Martinez, followed by Dana Colahan, and if Lucia Hamina could come forward, please.
Can you hear me? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm, you know, maybe a function of my privilege, it's like, do I come up here today? Do I come and rally? Do I come and speak to you? Why are we constantly up against two choices? One, short-term profit, and the other, mostly at the expense of, as everyone has said so far, mostly future generations? Do y'all have children? I see a lot of older folks here. You have children? Yeah. You have grandchildren, too? Yeah.
You're wasting your time, ma'am.
I just wanted to be sure that you could hear me and every single other person here asking you to deny this proposal, and that you're thinking about the future generations and the communities that you are meant to serve and also listen to and hear. So, that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have Dana Colahan, followed by Lucia Hamina, and then Dave Marsow, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Dana Colahan. I am co-executive director of Slingshot. We believe that everyone deserves the right to breathe clean air, drink clean water, and live in healthy, vibrant communities, which is why I urge you to reject Wolfden's second rezoning proposal for Picket Mountain. Slingshot is an environmental health and justice organization working alongside communities most impacted by environmental health threats to take aim at polluters and build community power. Through this work, we've witnessed the real threat metallic mineral mining can pose to our communities or environment. We worked alongside residents to stop Wolfden in Pembroke, and it's time to do it again here. We urge the LUPC to reject Wolfden's proposal for three main reasons. Number one, mining threatens our water. Wolfden's rezoning petition seeks to allow sulfide mining for zinc, copper, and other metals, as we've heard tonight. When sulfide ores are exposed to air and water, this process can result in the creation of sulfuric acid. This acid is dangerous in and of itself, but also leeches out toxic heavy metals which are harmful to fish, people, and animals. A spill could devastate our surface and groundwater, releasing cancer-causing toxins into the environment. This is a particular concern as the proposed mine would sit at the headwaters of the tributaries of the Penobscot River. Number two, mining threatens our air. Wolfden states that there would be 55 truck trips carrying ore from the mine each day, each with a load of 48,000 pounds of ore. Wolfden has not explained how it would prevent this acid generating ore dust from escaping the trucks, being deposited along the route, and from being blown even further away. Dust can bury deep into our lungs, creating respiratory problems and irritating already existing conditions such as asthma. Wolfden boasts that this proposal could add 300 jobs to the region, but are these really the jobs that we want for Mainers? NIOSH, the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, explains that the exposure to airborne dust puts miners at increased risk of developing lung diseases as well as dying from lung cancer. This risk increases even more when miners experience exposure to exhaust from diesel engines for five or more years, and diesel is a known carcinogen. Number three, the proposed mine threatens areas of cultural and spiritual significance to the Penobscot and the Holton Band of Malacite. Both tribal nations use this area for sustenance fishing, hunting, and gathering, as well as cultural and ceremonial purposes. Yet at every turn, Wolfden has shown disregard for Maine's tribal nations. At a time when there has been significant bipartisan support for the legislature to restore full tribal sovereignty, we should not approve a petition that would further environmental injustice. For these reasons, the threat to our air, the threat to our water, and the threat to the Wabanaki nations, I urge the commission to deny Wolfden's rezoning petition. Thank you for taking action to protect our communities, as well as this land that is sacred to the Wabanaki nations and special for all Mainers.
Thank you.
Up next is Lucia Hamina, followed by David Marsow, and if Kelly Merrill can come forward, please.
Hello, my name is Luca Hamina, and I'm both an Orno resident and student at the University of Maine, and I'm here today to state my opposition to rezoning at Picket Mountain. It goes without saying that Maine is well-known for its natural beauty, or the vacation estate after all. But any proposed mine would threaten this natural beauty and through that, any industry centered around hiking, camping, and fishing. This potential harm to the ecosystem is not the only concern that I have. I'm also concerned about Wolfden Resources specifically, and more importantly, their ability to adequately protect and respect the environment in ways that Maine requires. Wolfden Resources has little, as little experience running mining projects in Canada, having never dug their own mine but instead acquiring already begun mining projects from other companies, according to the Confederation Law Foundation. This lack of experience in their home country seems dubious at best for their first and only mining operation in the United States. Along with this, their current CDO, Ron Little, has overseen certain mining operations from a different Canadian company while working in Burkina Faso. The situation there in Burkina Faso was labeled an environmental justice failure by the Environmental Justice Act, as the actions of the company in question, Orzone, led to the displacement of thousands of villagers and the ruining of livelihoods by destruction and a restriction of access to the local environment. This lack of regard for native peoples' relationship with their environment in Burkina Faso seems to set a precedent for how Wolfden will be treating the concerns of an indigenous people here in Maine, given interview comments in which Ron Little praises Maine's lack of laws protecting indigenous rights, so Wolfden Resources would have an easier time setting up the Picket Mountain mine inland, which is culturally significant to the Wabanaki. If this is how Wolfden views running a mining company, coming in, damaging the environment, paying little regard to local people, and making it harder for individuals to utilize their natural resources, then both him and Wolfden Resources have no place in the state of Maine. Thank you so much.
Up next, we have David Marsow, followed by Kelly Merrill, and then if Diane Wilkins can come forward, please.
Good evening, my name is David Marsow. I'm 67 years old. I've lived most of my life in the, in the state of Maine. I'm a resident of the town of Searsmot, and I know some of these folks here. I'm a soil scientist, site evaluator, and wetland scientist, and have been involved in many difficult projects around the state. I think that if it's possible, the commission members and people who have a vote in this rezoning should seriously consider the folks who live handy to this project and give them more high value as opposed to folks who live downstate, because the other folks are gonna have to live with it in their backyard. I think that a lot of the materials, zinc, copper, and other materials that'll be mined out of this are used by us every day, in our cellphones, in our cars, in our televisions, and all these kind of things, and we seriously need to consider where those things come from. And unless we're willing to put those things away, then we're gonna need these resources and somehow get them mined from somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Kelly Merrill, followed by Diane Wilkins, and if Robert McNeely can come forward, please.
Good evening, members of the Land Use Planning Commission and esteemed tribal and community members. My name is Kelly Merrill. I'm here to speak as a steering committee member for the Maine Green Independent Party, and have been authorized to issue a statement on their behalf. We stand in solidarity with the Holton Band of Malacites, the Penobscot Nation, and other intervenors in opposing the proposed metallic mining at Picket Mountain and protecting the lands and waters for today and future generations. We strenuously urge you to deny Wolfden's current application and any future applications to rezone for the purposes of metallic mining. Recent years, environmental rollbacks around mining have made the wilderness vulnerable. The proposed mining would harm subsistence hunting, fishing, foraging, and Wabanaki culture. It will irreparably and irrevocably harm the land, the waters that surround it, and life within it, including endangered Atlantic salmon and brook trout. It would prevent a nature resource-based economy. The EPA calls metallic mining the most polluting industry in North America. Wolfden will be no exception. There has never been a sulfide mine that hasn't contaminated surrounding groundwater. In fact, mines from the 70s are still leaching contaminants into the water today. Wolfden and its investors are responsible for mercury contamination and Clean Water Act violations numbering in the thousands, contaminating land and water for present and future generations. We know this process leaches mercury and arsenic into the land and water. Further, it would introduce millions of pounds of cyanide into the pristine wilderness near critical waterways and tribal trust lands. Should cleanup be required, Wolfden has only committed to what amounts to 2% of its anticipated profits to remediation. The company would then be free to walk away after causing irrevocable damage, and there is no amount of money that will undo that. We should refuse to allow profit-grabbing extractors from desecrating this land. We urge you to deny Wolfden this application to mine Picket Mountain. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Diane Wilkins, followed by Robert McNeely, and if Jeff Reardon can come forward, please.
Hello, I'm Diane Wilkins from Westfalmouth, and I'm representing myself. First, I'd like to say that after hearing all the expert testimony, I've learned a lot. Most importantly is that this mining company would have to be extra, extra extraordinary at the supreme level, and even if it was, water contamination is pretty much certain. My roots are deep in northern Maine. My family was deported from the original Acadia by the Brits during the Revolutionary War, escaped to St. John's Valley and survived due to the abundant water, fish, and game. My grandparents, with 13 children, were able to be self-reliant and resilient against the Great Depression and other economic downturns because the earth provided game, fish, water, and healthy land for crops. Every year, my dad would join my uncles and cousins to hunt and fish, and then they'd share their abundant blessings with my family, elderly neighbors, and others in need within their community. This same self-reliance and resiliency in the face of economic uncertainty is not only practiced by my relatives, but continues to be a proud Maine way of life. Even now, hunting and fishing provides many, many in northern Maine with year-round supply of food. If the water is poisoned, causing the fish and game to disappear, the Maine resilient way of life will no longer be an option, but forever destroyed. Please don't accept these short-term gains and deprive generations and generations of resiliency and self-reliance. I urge you to deny the rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Robert McNeely, followed by Jeff Reardon, and if Nicole Krewhowsky can come to the front, please.
You wanna read those names again, please?
So up next is Robert McNeely, followed by Jeff Reardon, and then Nicole Krewhowsky. If you guys wanna all come up front and be ready, that'd be great. So no Robert McNeely? Okay, we will move to Jeff Reardon.
Good evening, my name's Jeff Reardon. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Atlantic Salmon Federation, for whom I work, in opposition to the rezoning petition. It will surprise none of you that I'm gonna talk about impacts on salmon and brook trout. Our mission is the conservation and protection of wild Atlantic salmon and ecosystems on which they depend. The Matawamkeg watershed is at the center of our work in Maine. NOAA's 2009 Biological Valuation of Atlantic Salmon Habitat under the Endangered Species Act included the West Branch Matawamkeg watershed within critical, designated critical habitat for endangered salmon, with 11,290 units of juvenile rearing habitat for salmon assessed as currently occupied within its watershed. For context, that's about 1.7 Naraguegus rivers in the entire West Branch. 402 of those units, the portion of the watershed upstream of Rockabye Lake, could be directly impacted by Wolfden's mine. I wanna skip now to my conclusion, because I suspect I won't get there if I just talk through this, and I wanna talk about the standard of review that you have in front of you. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan establishes a goal that you allow mining, quote, "where there are not overriding conflicting public values which require protection." The Chapter 10 rules require you to make a finding that the proposed development will be, quote, "not..." be, quote, "not detrimental to other values established in the club." In this application, Wolfden has both substantially misrepresented the existing character and quality of the fisheries resources that are potentially impacted, and has asked you to assume without evidence that there's no impact on them. The Atlantic Salmon Federation therefore urges you to reject the petition. Now, I want to come back and talk about those resources a little bit. We're very disappointed to see that Wolfden, although they have now acknowledged that there is designated critical salmon habitat, has paid so little attention to it in its application. Wolfden did not consult with any agency that manages Atlantic salmon in Maine about potential impacts on salmon. They acknowledged that the waters are designated habitat, but ask you to assume that their, quote, "water management strategy will ensure no adverse impacts to surface waters." That's literally the full sentence of their assessment. Wolfden incorrectly claims that the streams in the project are unlikely to provide suitable habitat for Atlantic salmon. If they looked at any of the various online mapping sources that are out there, they'd see that the streams that drain directly from their project site are designated as Class 1 rearing habitat for salmon, the highest possible classification. I think with respect to brook trout, their misrepresentations are even larger. They did consult with IF&amp;W, who told them that the regional fishery staff, quote, "consider Pleasant Lake to be some of the best brook trout and landlocked salmon habitat waters available in the region." Wolfden's description of those waters, citing two 1950s studies, is that they are, and I quote, "shallow, mud-bottom, warm, and not supportive of cold-water fisheries." Again, look at your standard. You should reject this petition. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Nicole Grohosky, followed by Al Larson, and if Victoria Markusick could come forward, please.
Hi there, everyone. Good evening. My name is Nicole Grohosky. I represent Senate District 7 in the Maine Legislature, serving most of Hancock County. I live in Ellsworth and have a degree in environmental chemistry. I want to thank you for hosting this additional hearing and recognizing that this rezoning is indeed a matter of statewide interest. I see four reasons why this application has generated so much interest and why your role is so important, more important than any role the Department of Environmental Protection would play in a Chapter 200 review. First, the proposed mine would be in the Katahdin region, an area that's cherished by Mainers and has deep cultural and historic significance for the Wabanaki tribes. The level of concern you have seen tonight must be taken seriously. Second, Maine taxpayers should be worried about getting stuck with cleanup costs in the event of an accident or bankruptcy, both of which are common with mines. Look, for instance, at the Callahan Mine in Brooksville, which is in my district. Waste from this zinc-copper mine contaminated drinking water wells and habitats. Contaminants found in the nearby residential neighborhood include arsenic, PCBs, and lead. The mine was only open for four years, from 1968 to 1972, and the long-term consequences of its operation are still being addressed over 50 years later. This superfund site has cost Maine taxpayers tens of millions of dollars in cleanup since 2004, when remediation began, and it is not over yet. Wolfden's application fails to account for the cost of a possible catastrophic failure like we've seen in Brooksville. We usually only find out how devastating a particular mining technology and operation is after it is too late. Third, the mine would be located in Maine's largest watershed. Mining pollution upstream could affect the health and well-being of those living downstream, including people in my district. And fourth, this application has statewide significance because it could be the first step in turning Maine into a mining state, as Wolfden has made it clear that it wants to do. Does Maine really want to become a mining state? With our wet climate, clean waters, and strong environmental ethic, Maine is not a good fit. This would be a very risky future, especially with a company like Wolfden that has never built a mine. I would urge you to take these statewide factors into account. Please listen to the people of Maine and the Wabanaki, protect our taxpayers, protect the Penobscot watershed and the health of its inhabitants, and tell Wolfden that Maine is not their mining playground. You have a unique responsibility for zoning in Maine's unorganized territories. You are the gatekeepers, not DEP. Please, stop this proposal at the gate by denying this application. Do not punt responsibility to the DEP, which frankly does not have enough staff for the important work that is already on their plate. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Up next is Al Larson, followed by Victoria Markowskis, and if Lakota Samborn can come forward, please.
Al Larson, Orono, and I'm here by myself. A Wolfden Resources mine is a bad idea for Maine. We have environmental problems already present in our state, and we don't need to add to them. We are already dealing with toxic waste, biodiversity losses, introduced pests, and climate change, but by far is the potential damage from toxic waste runoff residues from metal mining. Wolfden has never operated a mine before, so I doubt that their financial backing is deep enough to cover the recovery costs when it's no longer profitable for it to operate. Have they purchased a bond with a separate bond-holding company to cover the mine's cleanup costs? Many times, many mines have been underbonded, where the eventual cleanup costs have been far more than the value of the bond. Who pays for that extra cost? If Wolfden is successful in getting a zoning change passed and uses that to enable the sale of the mine, the apparent likelihood is for Kinross takeover. Kinross has a horrible record of many violations in Washington State, and is hardly a good example of a reliable company to continue the mining operation. If not Kinross, then some other large mining enterprise could take over. Businesses exist to make money for their stockholders, and one of the bedrock rules is to not spend money needlessly. Their obligation is to those stockholders not to be attentive to moral obligations. Even if the mine were to be made operational, eventually it would cease operation. It would then be needed to close down. Mining cleanup costs are typically based on an estimate provided by the mining company itself. There are many cases where these cleanup costs were up to 100 times the mining company estimate. It's an unfortunate fact that there is no cheap way to close up a mine. Even large companies that start out with the best of intentions may change their policies when they realize that their original estimates for cleanup are insufficient to cover the expense. Instead of being asked to do the impossible, they may back out of those attempts and wait for the government or the public to take over, like a superfund. The current policy of hard-rock mining companies towards environmental damage is to clean up and restore the mine area only after the mine has been shut down. They assume what is called "walk-away restoration" will be enough. This could be the resloping of the disturbed area to prevent erosion, putting a layer of topsoil to stimulate revegetation, or treating the flowage of water out of the mine area for regular leaves' water quality standards violated. It becomes necessary to capture and treat any polluted groundwater that flows out of a mine area for as long as it's needed, which in some cases could be forever. Either Wolfden or any subsequent owners, too much of an unknown, to be allowed to operate. Please keep the area around Pickett Mountain as it is and keep it in its natural state into the future.
Up next is Victoria Markusick, followed by Lakota Samborn, and if Dan Inello can come forward, please.
Hello, my name is Victoria Markowitz. I'm representing myself, and I live in Waldo, Maine. I recently graduated from the University of Maine with a master's in climate policy and international affairs, and I'm opposed to this mining site, and I want to tell you why climate change increases the risk for something to go wrong at this site. So as was mentioned earlier, the zinc ore that they plan on mining is a sulfide deposit, and when it's exposed to air and water, it produces sulfuric acid, and this causes acid mine drainage. And the proposed mining operation is surrounded by lakes and streams, as we know, and we need to protect those. And climate change is going to make this more difficult. So as we know, greenhouse gas emissions are causing the planet to warm, and as the planet warms, it causes more extreme and unpredictable weather. Floods, hurricanes, and extreme rain are becoming more common and harder to predict, harder to prepare for. As we know, Hurricane Lee just hit us, and New York City flooded last month. This summer, parts of Vermont and Maine were dealing with severe flooding. These aren't normal times that we're living in, and it's only going to get worse. Wolfden said that they're going to try to prevent acid mine drainage from happening, but I don't see how that is possible, since, as has been mentioned before, they have never operated a mine before, and we know that the CEO said his mining experience was open-pit gold mines in the Sahara Desert, where there are no wetlands or water anywhere. And now they're going to try to mine in Maine, where there is water everywhere. This does not give me any confidence that the company can successfully build and operate an ore mine in our extremely wet environment. And they said that they're going to try to contain the ore, but no one can predict the unpredictable, not even a qualified mining company can. If this mine were to be built at Pickett Mountain, it would likely be an accident waiting to happen, which is why I urge you to vote against this proposal. The Katahdin region is sacred to the Wabanaki tribes, beloved by Maine outdoors people for being an undeveloped area with pristine nature, and I don't believe there's really evidence that local communities would see economic benefits. I mean, 10 years of underground labor, is that really how we want to solve Maine's economic problems? So who are we risking our environment for? Just because this zinc deposit is attractive to Wolfden investors does not mean that it makes sense for the environment or the people of Maine to build a mine there. And it's a horrible thought that an extreme weather event like we've seen this year will hit Maine, flood the mine, and cause acid mine drainage to pollute the Katahdin region and the Penobscot River watershed. This is not a risk we can take. Thank you.
Up next is Lakota Samborn, followed by Dan Inello, and then if Nolan Altuetes can come forward, please.
My name is Lakota Samborn from Indian Island. I am here as an individual. I urge you to vote to deny Wolfden's current rezoning application. I wanted to begin by speaking of the CEO of Wolfden Resources, Ron Little. At the time of the land purchase around Pickett Mountain, he was working for the artisanal gold mining company Orzone, a company which operates in Burkina Faso, Africa. Shortly after purchasing the land around Pickett Mountain, Ron Little stepped down from Orzone to focus his full attention on opening this mine in Maine. Ron Little made his wealth through the brutal exploitation and devastation of land, water, and forced child labor in Burkina Faso. The Wolfden Mining CEO heralds his work in Africa as his crowning achievement. The United Nations International Labor Organization states that, quote, "In Burkina Faso, some 30% to 50% of the gold mine workforce is comprised of children. Most are under the age of 15, and some work under conditions of forced labor." Beyond the horrors of child slavery, I want to draw attention to when the Wolfden CEO spoke at the Millinocket hearing this past week, claiming the benefits of the rezoning would mean, what the benefits would mean, in terms of opening the state of Maine up to larger mining companies. He mentioned lithium deposits and spoke of how this could be good for Maine, despite lithium mining being one of the most destructive to water systems globally. I want you on the LUPC to understand what is at stake with this rezoning application. It's not just about this mine in Pickett Mountain. It's not just about the devastating impacts it could have on our watersheds. We must realize that approving this rezoning application would open the floodgates to destructive mining developers moving into Maine, wreaking havoc and destruction that would last for generations to come. I urge you to not fall for Wolfden's deceit when they talk of how their projects would benefit the state of Maine. I believe they couldn't care less about the state of Maine and its people, nor its waterways and pristine wilderness, the same way that Ron Little did not seem to care about the brutalization and devastation of children forced to work in his mine in Burkina Faso or the environmental impacts there. I don't believe Wolfden cares about the local economy. They only care about making a quick buck, extracting the resources from Maine, and then footing Maine taxpayers with the bill of cleaning up the mess that will inevitably occur due to this mine. I urge you to uphold the principles this commission was founded on, and your decision to think very deeply about the greater circumstances and approval of this application would mean for Maine. Do not allow this rezoning application to move forward. You have the power to do what is right for our future. I urge you to vote against this rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Dan Inello, followed by Nolan Altuetes, and then if David Nishiziski can come up front, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Ionello. I live in Green, Maine, and I've always loved the outdoors. And over the past few years, I've had the privilege of learning from experts in the field of bird, plant, animal, track identification. And last month, I was out with an experienced animal tracker, and he took us to a spot, or a couple of years ago, he found a beautiful pile of red fox scat, and that's poop, ladies and gentlemen. It's loaded with black cherry seeds, and he took us to that spot, where now a little cherry tree is growing, and we were looking at it, and deer had recently come by, and they were browsing upon that tree. It was a beautiful, natural cycle, fox scat to deer food. And I tell you this story because as my learning continues, there's a constant theme that shows itself time and time again, interconnectedness. Everything that happens in these woods is connected. I change the environment, the environment changes me every time I step into those woods. The health of the forest impacts our health. Every one of us here is connected to that fox and to that tree. That cherry tree will now grow, those leaves will help cleanse the air that we breathe, its roots will anchor the soil, and its fruit will feed the future generations of animals who will spread more seed, and that cycle will continue, a cycle we need to continue for our health, the health of our world, and all of us. And the idea of a mining operation in an area so close to Baxter, the Katahdin Woods, the beautiful north woods of Maine, is frightening. I'm concerned with the loss of habitat, the fragmentation of habitat, as well as the harm to the soil and the watershed. I worry if we open to the door to this type of operation, 300 acres today, quickly becomes 3,000, 30,000, 300,000 acres tomorrow. A mining operation cannot be simply isolated. It can't stand alone. It can't be separated from the woods that surround it. Water, wind, animals, and plant life do not recognize a line on a map. They don't know where Baxter ends and a mining operation begins. Directly on Wolfden's website, they claim a goal of zero impact to wetlands and waters. It's a lofty claim, but sadly impossible. The second you begin a mining operation, the impact has already begun. It can never be zero. Destruction of habitat, heavy equipment, sound pollution, drilling, blasting, this will impact Baxter and beyond. I think of this mine's impact on the prime habitat of the already threatened Canada Lynx. It reminds me of the importance that predators play in our ecosystem. I look forward to the day when we're at a hearing where we're talking about we have just doubled or tripled the size of Baxter. I want us all to be stewards of these woods. They are a gift, they are fragile, and they are finite. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Nolan Altuetes, followed by David Nishiziski, and if Sasha Spencer can come up front, please.
Thank you all for listening to my testimony against the prospective mining in Wabanaki homelands. My name is Nolan Altvater. I'm a Pasmaquoddy citizen from Zibayig, currently residing in Old Town, where I am an interdisciplinary studies PhD student at the University of Maine while working for my tribal community of Madokmi Gook. I also grew up in the area where the mining is being prospected, in the small town of Island Falls, so the place also carries significance, meaning to me growing up there as well. But I'll first speak to my perspective of a Pasmaquoddy and Wabanaki citizen. Wolfden's dismissal of the inherent sovereignty of the Wabanaki Nation speaks to their lack of integrity as a corporation and their unreliability to put the interest of both the Wabanaki people and our neighbors that we share this land in what is now Maine. The treaty responsibilities in which, according to Maine's constitution, that are supposed to be upheld with the Wabanaki people are based on the legal definition of sovereignty and not something that can be merely dismissed by a state or corporation. Additionally, as our definitions of tribal sovereignty inevitably includes assuring the health of the land, waters, air... the health of the land, waters, air, and our non-human relatives for everyone, such dismissal also goes against the future of our homelands and the future generations that will be dealing with our decisions today. It's a dismissal of all the hard work that has been done by the Wabanaki environmental departments in Maine's conservation community, as well as the public opinion of Maine that supports Wabanaki sovereignty. I believe it's time to stop collectively making a future that individually none of us want to live in. Thank you. One.
Thank you.
Up next is David Nishiziski, followed by Sasha Spencer, and if Ray Coastlines can come up front, please.
Hi there. I prepared something earlier but promptly lost it on the drive here. So I'm here for a couple of reasons. One of them is to look you all in the face, actually. This, this mine is one of those, this, this application for rezoning is one of those things that makes you feel like you're in the Twilight Zone. If things were working properly for our communities, we wouldn't have to light this up as the hope for the rural communities who are impoverished and will be lifted temporarily out of the situation, albeit left with a toxic water supply. It's a shame to have to be here and testify, like, things like this should just get shut down. Frankly, Wolfden didn't take the application seriously. Why should we take Wolfden seriously? And their claims that they're making about these technologies that don't exist, they're not just claims, they're bald-faced lies. And anybody who, who comes to my house and is lying at me and then decides to, to upsell the project with racism, they're out of the house. They're gone. There's never been a polymetallic sulfide mine that hasn't resulted in acid mine drainage. I mean, mic drop, right, everybody? What are we talking about? I challenge the people who follow me, who are proponents of this rezoning application, to speak to that. I hear a little bit about some, some jobs, they're gonna evaporate. The company said so itself. And, and if Wolfden is gunning for selling immediately, what good are any of the promises they're making? I mean, so, in closing, what I have to say is that if the, if the, if the commission doesn't reject this mine, no offense, but then we need to reject this commission because it's all out there. And if you read the testimony, and if you spend time looking at everyone who's spoken, and if you take a look at the written testimony on the LUPC site, you'll see that the overwhelming majority of people are against this, with a few form letters and some, some testimonies that I think are just not informed enough. And we can't rely on people who aren't informed enough to be dictating the future of our waters and our lands and our sacred spaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Sasha Spencer, followed by Ray Coastlines, and if Shannon Tisher can come up front, please.
Hello. Thank you all for being here, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm here to support the LUPC in rejecting Wolfden's petition because it is insufficient in its scope, and it is an insult to the important work of this commission. I have been watching the hearings in Millinocket and relate to the folks from that community concerned with youth flight due to lack of opportunities. I grew up in Washington County, and I saw the same thing happening there. This proposed mine is not a solution to youth flight. Folks where I grew up would often use the saying, "Land rich, money poor," to describe our area because, like many rural places, while the economy is challenging, the views are breathtaking, the air and water are clean, the forests fertile and abundant. A handful of jobs for a decade and feeding off the tax revenue crumbs from the billions that will go into the pockets of these profiteers will not lift this area out of poverty. Rather, it will eliminate future opportunities and incentives for young people to stay or come home to the region. LUPC, it is clear that you are tasked with more than simply approving or not approving this one rezoning petition for this one mine. You stand as the lock on the floodgates, holding back a wave of predatory transnational entities, Kinross, Altius, et cetera, all chomping at the bit to suck the life out of these woods and waters for cash in their investors' pockets. Their vision, their vision turns the health of the communities who happen to live above coveted ore deposits into externalities, and this beautiful land we love becomes overburdened. The consequences of this type of mining are dire. There is no room for mistakes. Monitoring may alert us to a problem, but once there is a problem, irreversible damage is already done. Endocrine disruption, fertility and reproductive problems, autoimmune conditions, and cancer are a few side effects of living near a mine. And putting a mine right in the middle of a huge system of rivers and lakes means a much greater area is impacted. Clean water is irreplaceable. The Chapter 200 rules do not adequately protect the water. This change in the law from the pre-Lipage restrictions is the blood Wolfden and his, and their friends smelled in the water in the first place and a new vulnerability to exploit. That, that, that and Ron Little's misconception that there are no indigenous rights to get in their way in Maine. I trust that you will show Ron Little that you do respect indigenous rights, that you do value all citizens' rights to clean water and safety from exposure to toxic chemicals. Gentle people of the LUPC, I thank you in advance for staying true to your charter to public health and rejecting this petition.
Thank you.
Up next is Ray Coastlines, and I have to apologize, I think it's Sharon Tisher, and if Luke Skara Flanders can come forward, please.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for being here and listening to all of our words. My name is Ray, and I'm representing myself.
Can you get closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
Yes, thank you all so much for being here and hearing our words. My name is Ray, and I'm representing myself. I'd just like to ask you, are you willing to risk the future of the health of the lands and waters that sustain all life for less than 100 jobs that would last 10 years or less? Are you willing to be complicit in breaking yet more treaties with the Wabanaki nations? Polymetallic mining is toxic. Wolfden's methods are untested. For the future of life, for health and thriving future generations, it is not worth the risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Sharon Tisher, followed by Luke Skara Flanders, and Anne, and I think it's Bert, or it might be Brent.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Tisher, and I live in Orno, and I'm speaking for myself. It's a privilege to be able to speak directly with you today about this application, and I thank you for holding this extra meeting in Bangor. I'm an emerita lecturer at the University of Maine, where I've been teaching environmental law and policy and honors college courses for now 29 years. I am testifying in opposition to this application because rezoning this area to allow mineral mining would be inconsistent with the rules of the commission and the comprehensive land use plan. Although it might be tempting to pass the buck on this application by sending it to the DEP, doing so would be an abdication of your responsibilities as commissioners and as stewards of the North Woods and the rivers, lakes, and streams that are among Maine's most precious resources. Over the past 50 years, Maine has achieved enormous progress in cleaning up our waterways. This proposal to build a mine on the Penobscot River watershed would be a colossal mistake. The Bangor Daily News reported that at your hearing last Wednesday, Dan Kuznerz, Water Resources Program Manager for the Penobscot Indian Nation, testified at length about the pristine quality of water near the proposed mine and the number of Atlantic salmon, trout, and other fish that have returned as a result of extensive restoration projects. He explained that all of the streams in the vicinity of the proposed mine are rated at Class A or AA, and that acid mine drainage can easily upset this fragile environment during the spawning season. According to Mr. Kuznerz, this habitat, quote, "represents the best chance for Atlantic salmon recovery in the United States," close quote. He also said that the proposed mine would have a likelihood of generating acid mine drainage, and to allow a metallic mineral mine to be developed so close to these waters would put Atlantic salmon recovery at risk. The BDN went on to report that, quote, "A Wolfden attorney did not cross-examine Kuznerz", saying they agreed with his testimony. This admission by the Wolfden attorney should put no doubt in your minds about how you should vote on this application. The CLUP requires the commission to avoid approving projects that would have undue adverse impacts on the area and its resources. Wolfden's attorney has admitted, through their agreement with Mr. Kuznerz's testimony, that this project would put Atlantic salmon recovery at risk. Every year, I teach my students about the Penobscot River Restoration Project and the remarkably successful results in the numbers of salmon returning. It would grieve me deeply to find this mine approved in the heart of the Katahdin region.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Luke Skara Flanders, followed by Anne Burt, and then if Alyssa Arscott can come forward, please.
Hello. My name is Luke Skara Flanders. I am a member of Community Water Justice. I live in Freiburg, but I have grown up along the Penobscot River and have extensive family who live in this watershed. I had the privilege of attending the Millinocket hearing. It's good to, good to be heard. Thank you. I attended, I, I attended this hearing not because I am paid to be here, but because I drink water to live, as I hope I'm not stretching and assuming that all of you do as well. I live in the Penobscot River watershed and have spent much of my upbringing along the Penobscot River. It seems to me that we all understand that this region has an abundance of water. This precious gift is also a responsibility. What has been negated by Wolfden is that aquifers, the underground sources of clean drinking water, are vast and interconnected. Even with the most advanced methods available, efforts to map aquifers are at best guesswork. I have heard repeatedly that Maine has the strongest mining laws in the nation. The reality is that we had the strongest mining laws until 2017, when amendments were passed that allowed for the contamination of groundwater. Chapter 200 does not protect us from acid mine drainage, acid mine drainage. Even with hot new mining technology, why on earth, why on earth would we test it here and gamble the ruin of such a uniquely rich region in water? The Picket Mountain site lies at the headwaters of the Penobscot River watershed, and though Wolfden contracted scientists insist that it is not an issue, we know that whatever contamination affects the headwaters will affect all of us downstream. Through this process, I have been presented with false choices, like it is between jobs and economic opportunity versus the environment, or it's mining here versus labor exploitation in Africa and South America. We seem to forget that this mine would enrich the same people who built careers and fortunes off of these devastating projects. The mining industry is known for many things. Being scrupulous is not one of them. As climate change worsens, water access is worsening. By 2030, it is expected that 2/3 of the world population will live without secure access to clean drinking water. We cannot take our abundance of water for granted. We must not gamble with an entire watershed for the sake of 10 years of limited economic benefit. The Wabanaki tribes have spoken. The vast majority of impacted communities have spoken. Consider those who cannot yet speak for themselves. You know your responsibility to the people, to all of us, to the environment, to the river, to the water. Please act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Anne Burt, Bert, excuse me, followed by Alyssa Arscott, and if Linda Swackhammer can come forward, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Andy Burt, and I'm testifying as a member of the Friends Committee on Maine Public Policy and as the Maine Council of Churches, representative to the Environmental Priorities Coalition. The Friends Committee is a statewide network of Quakers who are focused on public policy issues in Augusta. For several decades, we have addressed issues of concern to the Wabanaki peoples in Maine and worked to improve and strengthen Wabanaki state relations. The Council of Churches is an ecumenical coalition of seven mainline Protestant denominations in Maine, including Quakers, and together, the denominations represent more than 400 congregations and 50,000 members. The Friends Committee and the Maine Council of Churches join the Holton Band of Malacites, the Penobscot Nation, and many Maine environmental groups in strongly opposing any rezoning that would enable Wolfden Resources to proceed with mining and processing zinc and other metals in the Picket Mountain area or elsewhere in Maine. We oppose the rezoning proposal, knowing that the forested and pristine Katahdin region and Penobscot River watershed are sacred to the Wabanaki nations and treasured by Mainers as well. It's an area where the outdoors economy is rapidly expanding. On these lands and waters, Wabanaki people for millennia have engaged in their cultural practices of sustenance fishing, hunting, and foraging for medicines. The Class A waters are home to iconic and threatened wild Atlantic salmon and brook trout, culturally important and traditional sources of protein for the Wabanaki peoples and others. We know mining is a dirty industry. Maine's current mining regulatory structure, put in place in 19, in 2017, is designed to assure that only companies with proven track records of technical expertise and financial security be permitted to develop mines in Maine. Wolfden has no proven successes to demonstrate that it could treat the toxic wastewater created during the metallic mining process and bring that water up to Maine's legal standards. Callahan Mine has been cited here as a good example of long-term toxic effects on groundwater and the health and economic well-being. Recent studies have shown that although indigenous peoples comprise less than 5% of the world population, they effectively protect 80% of the world's biodiversity in regions they've lived for thousands of years. We urge you to listen to the wisdom of our Wabanaki neighbors and reject the Wolfden rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Alyssa Arscott, followed by Linda Swackhammer, and if Sidney Mitchell can come up front, please.
Good evening. I am Alyssa Arscott. I live in Orno right now as a second-year student at University of Maine studying ecology and environmental science. This is my first testimony, but I am not unfamiliar to the importance that you all hold in making the correct decision to deny Wolfden's request for rezoning. Ever since I can remember, I have been told that it's up to the young people to save this planet. Growing up in the climate crisis has been beaten into me how the world around us is burning. It is dying. I have grown up in a dying world. I have never known a healthy earth. This past summer, I was an educational trip leader through the University of Maine, and I helped lead incoming first-year students through the west branch of the Penobscot River. We hiked from north of Baxter State Park to south of Baxter State Park, and I was able to witness the clean water, flourishing wildlife, and the power the land holds over the people to bring them together. I left each of these trips knowing that I helped these first-year students make connections to both the land and each other as they entered their college experience. If this request goes through, I wonder what else you will allow. Soon, there will be no land to connect over. Through destroying the connection to the land, you are taking away the connection to the people. I am tired of my world dying. I am tired of you allowing it to die and telling me that it is my problem to fix it. Thank you for your time. Have a good night. Have a good night.
Up next we have Linda Swackhammer, followed by Sidney Mitchell, and if Serena Wesley can come up front, please.
I think after this speaker, we'll take the 10-minute break.
Good evening, and thank you for having this also down in Bangor to reflect the broad community interest in this. The history of this territory has always been of treasure hunting and taking. This is traditional and present Wabanaki land, and has been a source of extractive wealth for out-of-staters for centuries. Beaver pelts, timber, cod from the Gulf, and water mining by Nestle. Prospectors have always looked to what is now Maine to take things from and to dump things, like mill waste and trash leachate in the river. People worked hard on the Penobscot River Restoration Trust to bring back healthy fisheries and habitat. I urge you to reject this rezoning proposal by Wolfden Resources. This place downstream here is habitat and home. I live upstream in Vezie, by the Vezie Dam, and I see the effects of the rewilding and the attempts to clean this river. It is magnificent. This place is worth fighting for. We have learned from the past that private interests extract and take and leave a mess. Long after the money is gone, and it remains to be seen if this project is viable, the people and wildlife will be left with groundwater pollution and habitat destruction. The jobs promised in this rezoning proposal, well, last week Wolfden VP, Mr. Willett, said it would be four to five years before any jobs would be available to locals. I wouldn't bet my mortgage on it. The claim that there are no prerequisite indigenous rights is embarrassing even for a non-native like me. This company doesn't know us and insults us by asking for this rezoning proposal. If you want to do business in Maine, how about bring affordable housing, social services, or renewable energy? We are open for business for these terms. We need to have a national and even international conversation about minerals we need to move into a renewable energy future, but this is not that. Our history here tells us the right thing to do. We know how this extractive business goes. We've seen it play out, and we learned what our real treasures are. Please vote no, listen to the majority of the people here, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, when you come up to speak, be sure you tell us your name and where you're from. Or do you want to get more people up to?
Oh, sure thing. So I had called Sidney Mitchell and Serena Wesley, and then it'll be Hans Carlson. I know Hans Carlson's ready.
I'm here.
Oh, you're here.
I didn't know Sidney was here, though, so I didn't want to skip her spot.
Come on up. I will hold her place.
All right. All right. Hello. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission and Director Byer. My name is Serena Wesley, and I am a young person who moved from out of state and lives full-time in Patton, Maine. We do exist. I did drive down here. I'm here to voice my concerns about the mine project. As a chemist with a master's in biochemistry from Johns Hopkins, I'd like to highlight the chemical threats posed from the mining process. The mining of zinc and other heavy metals releases poisonous sulfoxides, we've heard about the sulfuric acid, into the environment, not only into the groundwater but also into the air and soil. The transit of the materials to and from the mine would release these poisons along the entire route, including my house, which I can see. These pollutants in the air would cause our communities of mostly elderly and children to be at high risk for cancers and respiratory illnesses. Pollutants from mining are the 13th leading cause of death in the whole world. As a result, residents would end up spending more money on healthcare every year. Not only do the pollutants poison our people, they would also cause acid rain. This acid rain would poison our waterways, wetlands, and fisheries. This would cost our current and future economy greatly in ways we cannot even fathom. Say goodbye to fishing trips with your family and friends in our beautiful area and to the most beautiful waterfall I've ever seen in the world. Wolfton will then say they can put in the mine without any of these problems occurring. I have done the research, and I have provided here 13 links from peer-reviewed journals and books that explain even our best technologies, permeable reactive barriers, subsurface flow compost, and phyto remediation, nothing that Wolfton told us about, do not promise a safety. At best, the only available method would remove 67.5% of zinc from the groundwater. There are no current technologies that would ensure our air safety. I understand why community members want to mine. They want to add jobs to our economy. I researched this as well. The terms ghost town come from the boom-bust economies of mining. Yes, some individuals may receive a better income for a few years, but it will end up costing our area more. As we've heard, if Wolfton decides to not upkeep their decommissioned mine, who will pay for the cleanup? Can Mainers really afford to sell out our environment, poisoning our water and air and long-term economy for a few folks who want to mow others down so they can make a quick buck? What would Governor Baxter have said? I can't even bring my dog into the park to go hiking with me. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Up next is Hans Carlson, followed by Brownie Carson and Scott Walker.
My name is Hans Carlson. I am a resident of the town of Castine. From my front porch, I look out over the mouth of the Bagaduce River to Goose Pond and the Callahan, former Callahan Mine. It too was once a state-of-the-art piece of technology. Nicole did a really, really good job of laying out the specifics of that, but let me emphasize a couple of things. Four years of corporate profit, 55 years of environmental destruct, damage, a pond you can't swim in, land you're not allowed to go on, $28 million thus far in remediation, which is not even half-done, all paid for by us. We've been down this road. Why would we go down it again? I just don't understand. Anywhere in the state of Maine, but particularly in an area that is a treasure for everybody in the state of Maine, that we know is sacred territory for Wabanaki tribes, that we know is a treasure really for the whole country. The Maine North Woods are really some of the last undamaged places in the United States. This is a terrible, terrible idea. Please, please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Brownie Carson, followed by Scott Walker and Becky Bartolvix.
Good evening. My name is Brownie Carson, a resident of Harpswell, a Marine Corps Vietnam veteran, having served there in 1968, '69. From 2016 to 2020, I was a state senator representing Brunswick, Freeport, Harpswell, and North Yarmouth, and I was the lead sponsor of LD-820, an act to protect Maine's clean water and taxpayers from mining pollution. The purpose of this law is to protect Maine's clean water and taxpayer from the pollution and the huge cleanup costs that have plagued mining operations in the U.S. and around the world. Our 2017 law set protective standards based on the best industry practices, so that any company seeking to mine in Maine must have two clear traits. First, a strong record of responsible mining in other jurisdictions. Second, strong finances to cover the full cost of monitoring, closure, treatment, remediation, and a possible catastrophic failure. Your responsibility to the people of Maine is determined to determine whether Wolfton has these traits. In terms of a track record, Wolfton has none. As the company CEO said last week, Wolfton has never built or operated a mine. In terms of finances, company has virtually none, 2.1 million on its balance sheet. Despite having no track record and very little money, Wolfton's CEO testified, quote, "Nobody has built a mine to this standard anywhere in the world, but we will," close quote. The core question before the Commission is whether this claim is believable. Can this tiny company accomplish something that no other company has? If you doubt the credibility of this claim, then it's hard to see how the Commission could reach any conclusion other than to deny this rezoning petition. At issue here is whether Wolfton has earned the right to move on to the next phase, which would be a multi-year Chapter 200 review by the DEP. The Commission should be wary, very wary, of forcing DEP to spend additional taxpayer dollars and staff resources processing a permit application for a company that has utterly failed to show that it can meet either LUPC or DEP standards. In October 2021, Wolfton withdrew its rezoning petition in the face of a recommendation by LUPC to deny it, based on flagrant errors and inconsistencies. Since then, what has changed? Not the company's finances, technical expertise, or the serious risk of damage to the project area. It seems that Wolfton is asking permission to play with fire in the heart of Maine's North Woods. Don't let this happen, please. Please deny Wolfton's rezoning petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Scott Walker, followed by Becky Bartolvix, and we'll try for Sidney Mitchell again.
Good evening, Commission members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Scott Walker. I represent myself. I'm a resident of Island Falls, which is nearby this project. My home overlooks Madawamkeg Lake and the flowing waters of the Madawamkeg River. I am here in support of rezoning and allowing Wolfton Group the opportunity to prove themselves. I'm a business owner. I am employer of, I am employer of many jobs in tourism, area recreational opportunities in real estate. I know the land very, very well. I have traveled it night and day. I'm also the, one of the coordinators of the grooming for the snowmobile trail system for Big Valley Snow Club. The Wolfton Group has given us an amazing opportunity to travel their land, create trails, and allow people to see it in that manner. And it's been a wonderful relationship that, that we've had so far with them, allowing us to do that and to share that land with other people. I know that people have said in here today, you know, let those voices of those locals, you know, speak the most weight, you know, in the area, got many businesses on this ground, promoting the area every single day of my life. I'm not going to stand here and hurt the area. But I do believe that they should have the opportunity to prove what they say they can do. Should they poison the water? No. Should they be shut down before they even get the opportunity to prove themselves? Absolutely not. I want to stand here in front of you and say, give them the chance. Let them show what they can do. Maine has extremely strict rules. They need to follow them. If they don't, out. But if they can, why shouldn't we give that opportunity to them and to the people of that economically deprived area? I've been in this area my entire life. My family settled on the land that I live on 152 years ago in 1871. I don't want anything bad to happen to it. All right? I promote it, I work it, and I do everything I can for the area. But I do, again, want to repeat myself, I am in support of the Pickett Mountain Project. I do believe that if they can do it the right way, it's wonderful for the area, and they do need to prove themselves. But if they can do it, it is good for our area. It also allows the people of Northern Maine, the hard-working individuals of Northern Maine, to prove themselves that they can extract mine, minerals from these mines in a clean, environmentally-friendly way. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I welcome any questions after.
Thank you.
Up next is Becky Bartolvix, followed by Sidney Mitchell, and then if Karen Francois can come forward.
Hi. Thank you very much for taking my testimony, and since you've heard from so many people, I'm going to just speak fairly shortly. I'm Becky Bartolvix. I represent Sierra Club Maine and our 22,000 members and supporters, and I also am the grandmother of, and, and mother of fishermen in the bottom of the Penobscot River in Penobscot Bay. I live on North Haven, what's known as North Haven Island, occupied Penobscot Territory. I want to say that, first of all, that we are speaking in opposition to this, as a Sierra, a Sierra Club is speaking in opposition to this, and we will be presenting our testimony to you at a later date. I, I, I want to also say that we stand with the Wabanaki people. The science that they have based their information on is clear, that no mining operation in the Pickett Mountain area can happen without causing harm to the health of the existing streams, the watershed, and its resources, including the largest salmon, Atlantic salmon return in the U.S. I think you've heard that from so many people about that, but acid mining will impact the top of the watershed, all the way down to the bottom and to our ocean. It is, it doesn't just stop in one little stream when this happens, and it's a huge area, is the lifeblood of, of Maine. It's the greater, Penobscot watershed is the lifeblood of much of Maine. It is, there are Class AA and Class A tributaries that are essential habitat for the brook trout and the Atlantic salmon. But they're also, they're pristine, clear, clean areas, and starting at the top of the watershed and risking the damage that can happen to our water, it is, a water is the lifeblood of our state for, of everything that we have here. And I, I, it's in our bodies, our water talks to each other, and the water that we have has been through all of the living beings in the planet before us, because there's always only been 1% of clean water in the world. And this water, we are risking acidifying, and that will damage every living, living thing downstream. So I hope you will consider what you have before you to do, no, no undue adverse impacts on the existing uses. And that's your language. It's going to be hard for you to do this, there's going to be a lot of financial pressure, there's a lot of big business that's probably throwing a lot of information at you, but that's the leg for you to stand on, and that's what we have given you as the people of Maine in the process of, of doing our, setting our laws. I hope you will deny this opportunity, this, this application from Wolfton. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, Sidney Mitchell, if she's here. If not, we can move to Karen Francois, followed by John Banks. All right, looks like it'll be John Banks.
Good evening, LUPC Commissioners and others. I just broke the microphone.
Please state your name and where you're from.
My name is John Banks. I'm a resident of Orano, a professional forester, and a citizen of the Penobscot Nation. I'm here tonight to urge you to deny this zone request, this zone change. I retired from the Penobscot Nation two years ago, after a 40-year career with the tribe as a departmental director. During that time, I also served as one of the Penobscot Nation's commissioners on the Maine Indian Tribal State Commission for 34 years. As you may know, the Maine Indian Tribal State Commission was created under the statutory provisions of the 1980 Maine Indian Land Claim Settlement Act. One of MITSEC's responsibilities is to regulate the taking of fish on certain water bodies, which brings me to the first point I'd like to share with you tonight. That's the issue of indigenous rights. Tribal sustenance fishing rights are recognized in federal as well as tribal law, and in fact, MITSEC must consider sustenance fishing practices when they enact fishing regulations on wat, uh, water bodies where they have jurisdiction. So you can imagine my shock when Wolfton stated that there are no indigenous rights That statement made me realize that this company is willing to spread false information in order to assure its backers of a smooth permitting process. The assumption that the tribes have no rights in Maine also makes me question if Wolfton is the type of company we should trust with the significant natural resources of the Pickett Mountain region. I don't think so. The second point I would like to make tonight has more to do with the LUPC process and some of the comments I've heard during these public sessions. The thought that we should let this play out, approve the zoning change, and quote-unquote "see what happens" as the first test of Maine's recently revised mining regulations makes me cringe. Why on earth would state officials take such a gamble with this project? This wait, wait-and-see-what-happens attitude seems to me like a potential shirking of LUPC's duties. We know that this type of mining does cause ecological damage everywhere it has been done. This very dangerous gamble would be a huge mistake. During the course of the hearings in Millinocket, I heard Wolfton use the concept-
Can you please?
-hope many times.
Sir, can you please wrap it up?
The economic future of this region lies in the outdoor recreational sector. Hiking, canoeing, hunting, cross-country skiing, mountain biking, fishing, ATV-ing, trapping, snowmobiling, wildlife-watching, kayaking, all bring a lot of opportunity to the region. New motorized and non-motorized trails are being developed all the time.
You've exceeded your time.
The current zoning, one more sentence, the current zoning of the Pickett Mountain area recognizes and supports these uses that I've mentioned. Change in that zoning now would be an exercise of the tail wagging the dog. I urge you to reject Wolfton's zoning change request. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Up next, Corinne Spitfire, followed by, I can't read this first name, so we're going to go with the last two, Hadlock Sealy.
Robin.
Corinne Spitfire? Okay, we'll move to Robin Hadlock Sealy.
My name is Robin Hadlock Sealy. I'm a marine scientist, and I was born here and live in Pembroke, a Washington County town of 788 people, about the size of Patton, actually. I listened to most of the testimony last week. I represent myself. I oppose the rezoning, and thank you for all your work on the Commission. I came this evening to share some of Pembroke's experience in 2021, '22 with Wolfton as a company, trying to get their silver mine explored and developed in our town. This might help you in your deliberations. I also want to share what I've learned about another junior mining company that Wolfton's staff worked for and counts as part of Wolfton's, quote, "400 years of experience," unquote, so often mentioned by the applicant. The most polite thing I can say about our experience as a town, as a town with Wolfton is that people found it necessary to fact-check every claim or statement offered by the company. Many claims were made, but in Pembroke, actions speak louder than words, and we paid attention to actions. Residents had grave concerns about water, water quality, acid mine drainage, same as here, but we also worried about our state-designated salmon and trout habitat and our aquifer, and fishermen were very concerned about mine pollutants draining into Cobbs Cook Bay and the impact of heavy truck traffic on our local roads. Pembroke residents were surprised to wake up one morning, for example, and see a truck with Mexico plates show up, not Mexico, Maine, the country of Mexico. Induced polarization, or IP, is geophysical imaging technique for exploring ore in the ground. Rather than use a Maine company capable of IP work, Wolfton apparently hired a company from Mexico. Our little town finally said enough, and in April 2022, we voted overwhelmingly, 129 to 48, to put in place a local ordinance that regulates mining to prohibit commercial-scale mines in our town. And finally, I urge you to look up the history of Travalli Mining Corporation in Canada. There's no need to invoke the Callahan Mine, you can just look at these Travalli mines. Mr. Willett told us in Pembroke that he used to work at their Half Mile, Half Mile Mine in New Brunswick as an engineer, so his years there count towards Wolfton's 400 years of experience. And right after he told us that, just a few months, they were filing for creditor protection, they were in financial collapse, they filed for receivership after mining executives took about $40 million in payouts. Employees were out of work, New Brunswick ended up paying $49 million in remediation, and the provincial government came responsible for carrying on the water remediation system so water standards were not violated, and ended up renting equipment from Travalli to do so. So I urge you to look up the history of these companies, and obviously Wolfton's not responsible for this mess I've just described, but this is a junior mining company, and what happened in New Brunswick after it collapsed could happen here. Please deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Eddie Nishomi, followed by Teddy Dickerson Smith and Margaret Schuber.
My name's Eddie Nakami. I live year-round in Orano. I'm here representing myself. I'm here to urge the LUPC to deny the rezoning application for Wolfton's Pickett Mine. I'm a second-year environmental science student at the University of Maine. I've spent lots of time in my classes discussing the disastrous human health effects of metallic mineral mining projects across the world. I don't have confidence in the protection measures- I don't have confidence in the protection measures described by Wolfden to curb acid mine drainage at the proposed site. I know from my coursework that the water in this great state is connected through our watersheds. This project will not exist in an isolated bubble, no matter what Wolfden says. I do not believe that the measures outlined by this company will provide enough protection for the continued integrity of this watershed to be maintained. I recently had the opportunity to go on a bikepacking trip over fall break, where friends and I took a bus up to Sherman and biked back to Orano. We had the privilege to bike through the Katahdin region over five days. During our journey, we were able to safely refill our water supplies using a filter bottle at several rivers and streams that are a part of this watershed, notably the Saboy River. This water sustained me. I want it to be able to sustain me when I come back in the years that follow. I want it to be able to sustain me and the family I hope to bring to see it one day. Do we not deserve the ability to drink the water from our planet? We can no longer afford to be short-sighted in how we treat our world. I urge the LUPC to deny Wolfden's rezoning application. Please preserve the integrity of water resources for my generation and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Teddy Dickerson Smith, followed by Margaret Schuber, and then Chris Buchanan.
Hi, my name is Teddy Dixon Smith. I'm 17, and I'm a resident of Orano, Maine, but spent 16 and 1/2 of those years in a small lobster fishing community on the Skutik Peninsula. So during the summers and the falls for my whole life, I've spent at camps in Baxter State Park, enjoying the views and the hiking all around the rivers and the lakes in the area. If this mine were to go through and this proposal was to be allowed, then the chemical output of this facility would mean that kids like me could not safely play and drink from the waters and streams in the area for years and years to come. Over the summer, I did an internship with a local land trust where I learned about the fallout of a different industry but similar consequences. The Orington or Holtrickham facility, which ended up with the dumping of a whole bunch of mercury into the Penobscot River watershed. And just in the past few years, the National, or sorry, Natural Resource Defense Council and the Maine People's Alliance won a case against Malinkrot, the company that ran the facility, to clean up the river and the areas around, but that took, like, multiple decades to go through, and the cleanup is not going to fully reverse the effects, the negative effects that it had on the landscape. Importantly, to me, over 13 square miles of lobster and crab fishing down the coast at the mouth of the Penobscot were closed due to the high levels of contaminants in the water. And as someone who grew up in a small, very resource-dependent community, I think that the impacts of this small industry of mining should not be allowed to completely outweigh the industries all across Maine that have existed for hundreds and hundreds of years relying on the safety of the fish and animals in the rivers and streams, and then, of course, downriver in the ocean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Margaret Schuber, followed by Chris Buchanan, and then Diana Owen.
Yes, hello. My name is Margaret Schuler. I'm a resident of Maine. I grew up in Augusta and live in Newcastle and Cumberland. And I'd like to thank the Land Use Planning Committee for listening to our pleas in general to save the environment of Maine and request that you please do not rezone to allow mining on the Pickett Mountain area in Maine. We ask that you please not allow Wolfden to put a mine in that region. I'm here to represent my family. My parents, years ago, returned from World War II, and my dad was hired to work at the Veterans Center in Togas. After seeing the destruction of Europe and death of so many people, many veterans sought solace in the nature of Maine, and I think they still do. People are still coming back, the Vietnam veterans, Korean veterans. We don't want to see Maine destroyed like Europe. The mountains, lakes, and oceans, and the beauty of Maine has brought hope to many people. It's clear from history that the people of Maine do not want their environment destroyed and polluted so that only a few corporations and businesses can profit from our losses. We are all very concerned that the Wolfden Corporation will destroy a fragile Maine environment and that there are no second chances. If the Wolfden pollutes the area up by Pickett Mountain, it will be forever. One of my grandfathers, my mom's dad, was a coal miner who mined coal in Kentucky, and when that went bad, they moved to Indiana to mine coal. Their life was awful. My mom's life was awful growing up, and her dad died very early from black lung, and the area in which they all worked was toxic and polluted. My mother's life was a great hardship, and mining seemed to create just a good life for the corporate bosses and the developers. So you have to be really, really careful with something so toxic. It is well documented how the mining industry has created pollution in Maine and around the world. You've heard a lot of testimony about that. Mining companies will simply declare bankruptcy if it goes wrong and leave the taxpayers to pay for decades of remediation and cause the funding of superfund sites. Many people have mentioned that, and many, and many examples, such as the Callahan Mine in Brooksville. So anyway, I guess I will stop there.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Up next is Chris Buchanan, followed by Diana Owen, and then Dawn York.
Hi, good evening. I know we've all been here for a long time today, and I appreciate your time and appreciate you hearing us. My name is Chris Buchanan. I live in Searsport now, which is, as many of you know, where, near where the Penobscot River comes out into the bay, and it's occupied Wabanaki Territory. I wanted to pick up some pieces that people haven't mentioned. I've had a lot of different hats. I'm currently a full-time carpenter, but for many years, I worked as a community organizer, and I facilitated the creation of a decentralized coalition to stop the east-west corridor from going across Maine. So I've been to lots of events like this, and one of the things that I've noticed in all that time is, is the legal imbalances that exist between communities and the corporations which enter them. Just the current state of law in our nation is such that when a community decides something like, well, we don't want them here anymore, it's extremely difficult to remove them. So I think it's a nice concept that, you know, let's let them try and see what happens, and then we can just ask them to leave, but it's completely unrealistic, and it won't go that way. So I, you know, regret some of the people that think that because it's just been proven over and over again not to be the case. I also want to just not glaze over the cleanup, like, it'll take so much money to clean up, and it'll be so expensive, and, you know, the burden will be on taxpayers. Of course it will, that's how it goes, but the cleanup itself is really intensive. I was, I was raised by a biologist who, this was his expertise, and the cleanup to, you know, for example, clean up the Holtrickham, decades and decades of dredging in the river to the point where they're sorting all this soil and, you know, trying to find just only a milligram of the contaminants that are left. It's so environmentally damaging just to do the cleanup, and I want that to be heard. And the last thing I was going to say is, I think that, you know, the, the concept of we need another industry to save us is sad. It's over to do it that way. I think the people who have spoken to sustenance and how we need the water and the land to be healthy in order to live, those are the kind of economies we need. So it's the time for local economy. Depending on global companies and, you know, global economics, it's, it's failing. It's going to continue to fail as climate change threatens all of us, and water does become more scarce, and it'd be really sad if we couldn't live here anymore. And definitely, no young people will come, I guarantee it. So I'm just ready to move out of the boom and bust cycle, and I hope you guys are too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Up next is Diana Owen, followed by Dawn York, and then Barb Baker.
My name is Diana Owen. I live in Piscataquis County, Milo. I am First Nations, Canada, Malacite. My father is from Brazil, and I could tell you horror stories about the environment. Brazil is in an absolute destructive decline, absolutely economically and environmentally, and they continue to do all for a burger, all for McDonald's. We got to have one more building, one more McDonald's on every corner. Brazil's gone. Is that what Maine wants? I've already seen the clearcutting up at Mount Katahdin, and that was my sacred land. That was the land of my ancestors. Did you hear the chant that I did in the back? That was the call of the ancestors. That's a war cry. That's to call them to come here and protect us, because we're certainly not. I'm going to give you a little bit of a story. My daughter and I, she was two at the time of BP, we were in Louisiana when BP oil spill happened. We heard the broken promises. We were 10 miles from the shore. We were five miles from BP headquarters. Whenever you wanted to pass the headquarters, and the only way to go into home of Louisiana was to go through and pass the headquarters. So you were searched, and, and your vehicles were searched, your body was searched, you had to pull over, and it wasn't you, United States military, who did it. It was UK. UK military searched the bodies of United States citizens, and it was allowed, completely allowed. The digging up, they would take the oil and buried it into the sand, and then the shore would, of course, bring it back up. And then if you took pictures, it was a $5,000 fine, and you could do 15 years in jail, and you'd be on a terrorist list. And that was no joke. That's what we endured in BP. We got out of BP, got out of Louisiana, moved to North Carolina. All of a sudden, oh my gosh, the chicken farm factory of Purdue threw in $2,000, $2,000 gallons worth of chicken sewage into the drinking water. And at the same time, two days later, the North Carolina nuclear power plant had a leak. How many of these do we need to endure? How many? I understand oil, chicken farm factories, farm factories is what's the number-one cause of environment, the climate change, the collapse of the environment. When is it going to be enough that corporation doesn't override the people? We're forgetting the Constitution, and we're also forgetting it's the people, not corporation and not legislation. We put you where you are. Remember it. Because we survived BP, but there are a lot of people who did not. Autoimmunes are at an all-time rise. Cancer is on an all-time rise. The only time people were ever allowed to come out and actually do any cleanup, they sat in buses for hours and hours and hours, was when media showed up. Is that what we're going to do here? We're going to do the same thing here? Enough is enough. Put the people first. Do cleanup. Clean up what you already done to the water from the paper mills and the lumber companies. Clean them up first. Oh, my name is Diana Owen.
Thank you.
Up next is Dawn York, followed by Barb Baker and Jan Morle. So we'll go with Jan Morle.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jan Morle. I live in Rockland. I'm the Talings Campaign Manager for Earthworks. My name was last on the list, so I think we're getting there, and thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak to you today. Earthworks is a national nonprofit dedicated to protecting communities and the environment from the destructive impacts of extraction projects, mining, energy and natural, oil and natural gas. The precautionary principle emphasizes that decision-makers should use caution when faced with choices where the exact impacts of a project are not understood and where the potential effects may have long-lasting and, may be long-lasting and severe. The LUPC must have a clear understanding of the water and environmental impacts of the Pickett Mountain project. This is particularly important because every year, the metallic mining industry is the leading industrial polluter in the United States. In the West, over 40% of the headwaters of the western watersheds have been polluted by mining. Acid mine drainage is especially harmful because it can occur indefinitely, long after mining has ended, and a literature review of AMD done by the Alaska Fish and Wildlife found that, quote, "No hard rock surface mine exists today that can demonstrate that acid mine drainage can be stopped once it occurs on a large scale," end quote. Due to the severity of water impacts of acid mine drainage, many hard rock mines across the western United States require water treatment in perpetuity. The EPA estimates that abandoned mine cleanup in the United States will cost $50 billion. And permitting a mine that produces acid mine drainage means that future generations will have to take responsibility for a site that will be managed for hundreds of years. As you all know, as you all heard, data shows that it is extremely difficult to predict the exact impacts of mining operations before they begin. You heard from Dr. Maste about her unprecedented research that showed that 76% of mines were unable to predict their impacts on water quality before mining. A 2023 study by hydrologist and geophysicist Dr. Stephen Emmerman highlights the inability of the mining industry to identify sulfide ore mines that don't lead to environmental contamination. The state of Minnesota is considering a bill called the Prove It First Law, or Prove It First Bill, which would prohibit sulfide ore mines unless a company could provide evidence of a mine that operated for 10 years and has been closed for 10 years in the US or a similar environment that had no environmental contamination. The mining industry has routinely put forth eight mines in the US and Canada, including the Eagle Mine, which was discussed last week. Dr. Emmerman found that all eight candidates were discredited because they actually did have records of environmental contamination or there was insufficient data on the monitoring. So the mining industry, industry itself is unable to prove examples where there's no environmental contamination. Just to conclude, and I'm the last person, I'm going to take two more seconds, approving rezoning for this area would be gambling on the fact that the contamination would be worth the potential benefits of the operation. However, given the importance of water to the state of Maine, the precautionary principle, and the impacts on future generations that this project would have, I'd urge the LUPC to not take that gamble and to deny the rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll leave a copy of Dr. Emmerman's study with the printed documents in case anyone would like to see it. Thanks.
We have three people still on the list, so Oliver Valerno, followed by Teagan Owen, and then Aiden Owen.
I'm a resident of Piscataquis County, and I'm a-
Can you get just closer to the mic, please?
Sorry about that. Hello, my name is Ollie Valero. I'm a resident of Piscataquis County, and I am a Malacite and Pasmoquoddy Native youth. I'm here tonight to represent myself and the other seventh-generation Native youth within this state. Tonight, it would be an honor to talk to you about the changes that I have seen as a Native American youth living in Piscataquis County on the three rivers that will be directly affected by the mining near our rivers. I have started working with the Wabanaki Youth and Science Programs through the University of Maine at Orano when I was 11 years old, and I am now 17. I have learned what, the Western sciences and seen them in action from a Native perspective. I could talk tonight about the sciences behind why mining will have negative effects on our waters, but I will be approaching this in the perspective of a youth and protecting our Mother Earth. I'm an avid fisher- I'm an avid fisherman. I have seen rapid declines in our fish just since 2016. I've seen my people and my elders get sick from cancers and other diseases, mostly caused by pollutions from paper mills, that I'm sure at some point or another were deemed as safe with the latest technology. I watched my mesum and musum pass away and elders closest to me get sick and pass away. My grandfather passed away from, directly from, the paper mills. Over the years, Native people have seen treaties, heard promises, all of which have been broken. I have seen the effects chemicals have done to my people's land. Just walking through the woods and touching the trees, you can see and feel the effects of logging and what that industry has done. I fear for myself, for my siblings, and for the generation after. It has been scientifically proven time and time again that we are all in dire straits. I urge you to view this from the youth's perspective. We are scared, we are hurting, and we know that you all are too. Please, I urge you to work together and work with us for preserving our future.
Thank you.
This is Teagan.
Hello, my name is Teagan. Hello, my name is Teagan. The animals are brothers and sisters, and the otters and my mom, so please keep it safe.
Hello, my name is Aiden, and I am 11 years old.
I'm a resident of Milo.
I am a resident of Milo, Maine, and I've lived.
Directly on the Three Rivers.
I have lived directly on the Three Rivers. Please do not pass any application that may harm Mother Earth. If this application is passed, this will be another.
You can hold it closer.
Addition to the collapse of the Earth's balance and all of our wildlife will be in serious trouble. Please reject the.
Respect.
Respect the balance of Mother Earth's nature, and do not pass this application.
Thank you.
I don't have any new names on my list.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to speak? Okay, you may come up. I take it you didn't take the O's? Only if I give it. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Proceed.
My name is Laura Noble. I grew up in New Mexico. I've lived as neighbors to multiple Indigenous communities around the United States.
And where do you reside now?
I live right now in Brewer. I've lived here since 2009. I was diagnosed with cancer February 2021. I'm still alive, and I've met a lot of other people that have cancer. And the prognosis for people with cancer is a long, hard road, and it's very, very costly to the state, to people trying to work, and the families that are like trying to survive with someone who could die and live and keep going with what they're doing. You have to have support, and I've been really blessed to have support. That's part of why I'm here. When they talk about the water and how it runs in our bodies, don't forget that. My cancer is partly in my lymph. The lymph flows through every single cell in our bodies. That's what supports us. And I've determined it's not genetic. It was environmental in its nature and how it impacted me. I still don't know the full causes of it, and I will never know because we have so many routes to cancer. You know, the fire retardant, where we're trying to prevent fires, it's in our sleeping pajamas for children and the car seats, to name something. What about the PFAS that we're already dealing with that they're calling forever chemicals that's been dumped on our farmlands? We in Maine do not need more impact like that. I really urge you to stand in the way of this application. I bet every single one of you knows someone who's battling cancer. What are our cancer rates in this state? Where are those numbers? And how do they correlate to the toxic things that have already happened here? We can do better, and we know that. There's a lot of science to support it. So I please urge you to think about all of those things and stand for your relatives. Stand for your children. Make a good choice.
Thank you. I wish to remind everyone that the record will remain open for written comments from the public for 10 days until Thursday, November 2, 2023, and for an additional week until Thursday, November 9, 2023, for rebuttal testimony. Except for post-hearing briefs to be filed by the parties, no other evidence or testimony will be allowed into the record after that date. Updates on the review process for the proposed rezoning, including links to the commission's final determination in this matter, when available, will be provided through the Maine Gov Delivery email system and posted on the LUPC website. Persons with questions about signing up for the email notice should speak with an LUPC staff. I hereby close the public hearing of the Land Use Planning Commission on ZP 779A, the proposed rezoning to allow for the Pickett Mountain Mine. Thank you, people.